Welcome everybody to the first episode of the Tunnel Meeting. Of Warcraft III Talk Show and yeah, it's the first one, so we're gonna be very, very green here. Little bit of a beginner at this, but I'm sure it's gonna be fun with these guys. We've got Lado, Side and Insub joining me today. To talk about all the Warcraft III news and actuality. How are you guys doing?
Very good, thank you.
Doing pretty good, pretty excited to, uh, to this.
Running really great. This is, I, yeah, I'm super excited. I think this is great for the community and anything that's good for the community is exciting.
Yeah, completely agree. Uh, our first subject today that we're gonna talk about is the Reforged launch and then we're gonna cover everything Reforged related, so Reforged launched very recently. And you guys have had the opportunity to, to follow that, to play a little bit, so. What were your impressions around all of this and, uh, yeah, like anything you wanna say? Side, go ahead first.
Uh, yeah, I was kind of a disaster, honestly, the Reforged launch. Especially like I played at midnight when he launched and the matchmaking worked like for like fifteen minutes and then it didn't work anymore, but I guess that didn't stay long, but overall there's so many bugs, it's really not up to what everyone expected, though if you look at the state of the beta, it was kind of expected that it would go that way. Uh, but I'm still hopeful, honestly, I think they can fix most of the, the things that are wrong. So hopefully they, it would get better soon, we'll see.
Yeah, I feel the same too. I think, uh, at first it was a little bit of a letdown, you know, when we locked down, there was no ranks and it feels like there was no MMR and we just played against guys who didn't know how to make a hero. But on the positive side, I think, I think Classic feels really amazing, cause I didn't really plan playing with any graphics anyway, so I think the game feels a lot better. I feel like the ping has gotten a lot better. Being an NA player, I think, uh, playing against syrup often kind of put me in a weird place to play well because of the ping, so I think having better server, cause now it's on beta 2.0. So if you have, let's say you have a hundred ping on beta 2.0 compared to the old servers that we have in Classic, a hundred ping is gonna feel better on the new server because they're more modern. So now it feels like I can really play well and I've seen a pretty decent improvement in my plays just because of that in the first place. But of course, uh, yeah, there's so many bugs and, uh, yeah, but yeah, I'm trying to see the positive, I think campaign is pretty nice. I feel like eventually everything's gonna fall into place and you know, and maybe six months we're just gonna talk about how much we were crying about how bad it is. I think it's just gonna fall into place eventually. So I'm having a lot of fun with the game and I can't say anything really bad for me, I'm having fun.
Uh, yeah, I, I would say the, the two words that come to mind for me are it's a, it's disheartening and it's a missed opportunity for Blizzard, because the, the two things that I was most excited about for, um, for Reforged was one, just an influx of new players and number two was just an updated infrastructure, because obviously the, the old, the old uh, user interface was really bad. There was a lot of things you had to go through, like, I mean, look at us, the, the people who play on net ease. People who play on net ease, you have to go through so many loops just to even get on the Chinese server and then once you do play on it, then you play with like 200 ping, so. The idea of having like a global internet, you know, or sorry, a global interface that actually worked where you played against people, it was modern and a bunch of new players was really, really exciting. And basically when it came out, none of that worked, so, um, that and, and when a game first drops, obviously that has the most hype and there's the most players right when a game first comes out, like the if you looked on Twitch, it was, you know, sixty, seventy thousand people watching, um, watching Warcraft III, which is amazing, that's incredible, but then people go and they look up the game and they're like, oh wait, this game sucks, I'm not gonna play it, you know, so it feels like if all of those things were up to date and they must have done playtesting, they must have known that there, that it was bug ridden, that there were missing features and all that stuff, but, um, so through that playtesting, why not delay it another month or two, make sure that the release is a solid release and then all of those new players that are playing it for the first time, make sure that they're having that positive experience so that, you know, they might venture into Battle.net and then we might see some new name. Uh, I was really excited about seeing like some new names come up in the, in the ranks in the next six months or so. And it feels like all those new players that may have played in the last, you know, week or two, they're, you know, they're, they're just gonna have a bad experience and they're just gonna leave the game, um, so yeah, I ju- I feel like it was Blizzard dropped the ball, in my opinion.
Yeah, I kinda echo the sentiment, like obviously this is not the launch that we're all hoping for, but uh, and obviously it's very disappointing and like, you know, we're all expressing our disappointments. But I feel like at the end of the day, though, it's still Warcraft III, right? It's still the game that we all like, so for us, you know, it doesn't matter as much because we're gonna keep on playing the game no matter what. But yeah, for sure, it was a good opportunity to get more people into the game, but honestly, I honestly, I really don't know how many people would have played anyway and stuck around to play. Uh, like, you know, I feel like a remaster usually is gonna have like a lot of hype, but then after that, to retain that player base is like very difficult. It was, it was probably the same for StarCraft remastered, like, you know, I bought the game, for example. And then I played a little bit and I was like, oh god, like this game is really, really hard and I was playing so slow and I was like, and then I didn't touch it again, so I just bought it, I played a little bit and then I never played it again, so I feel like for Warcraft III Reforged, it was probably gonna be the same. For a lot of players, uh, sadly, and I feel like maybe it's for like the content creators and then people in general to try and help out with that, you know, like, or even streamers, you know, like all of you guys stream, you know, if you start entertaining people, they stumble into your stream randomly, then they might choose to just stick around because, you know, they're entertained by you guys and then also in turn, did this makes me, this makes them want to play more. If you guys had to single out one thing that you'd like to see fixed ASAP, what would you say, uh, would be, you know, like obviously there is like, we talked about profiles, statistics, I don't, I don't know that you guys care about this that much, there's like the color bug. If you had to pick one thing that you'd like to see improved very, very soon?
I think, I think if, if we're talking like small details, of course, I think the color bug is extremely distracting in game, I think, uh, everybody has experienced, uh, like a few games with it, especially to Utah last time I said against Bizarre, that was really a disaster. Just like every time you use motion on your, uh, on your peasant, was switching to blue to red and feels like in fight sometimes, I, you know, I play on that, so when I use M panel, the army just changed color every time and then you have to press alt in the middle of a fight to bring back your color to whatever they wear and I felt like it's really distracting because you have to press all your keys at the same time. I think if we're talking something maybe a bit, uh, bigger and then more important, I would like to um, pretty much I like rankings, because I feel like rankings really makes you play for something, makes you work for an achievement, trying to get top ten, top thirty, whatever you were trying to get. And I feel like it's just makes me, you pretty much play the game at night after work or something. And I, I feel like that's pretty much what, uh, makes the game fun, in my opinion. Really, really, really like rankings, it's just like try, like trying to fight for something and also maybe stopping, having the people matching into Koreans and have like five hundred ping. I already Europeans have been having a rough time lately matching the Koreans on that, on the ping like that, it's pretty annoying, but I think rankings is mostly the what I want the most.
Uh, I agree with Insub, I say rankings and the thing, I might not understand it super well, but StarCraft II already has a great ranking system in my opinion, in terms of the way they do. They have the bronze, silver, gold, platinum, you know, master, grandmaster, whatever, and then there's actually an MMR assigned to you, so. You know, the grandmasters are somewhere in like that five thousand, fifty-five hundred number, but having that number be visible to the player and knowing kind of like where you stand on the ladder and on the rank, that's already something that Blizzard owns and they have it and they have it implemented into StarCraft II. I'm sure it's not as simple as doing a copy paste from StarCraft over to Warcraft, but it seems like the you know, the backend infrastructure, it's there, like they know, they, they have it for StarCraft II, why can't they just put it into Warcraft III?
Yeah, uh, if I may add, uh, to answer Lado, I think it's, it's probably not too difficult indeed, but, um, considering they left a lot of bugs which were still in the beta. I believe they were most likely like rushed out and they didn't have time to do all, all of this. So they probably did like campaign or made, made sure that campaign was playable. And kind of, uh, ditched out the other stuff for now and plan to add them later on, most likely. And about the, what I would like to see, I think I agree, like rankings would be better for everyone, cause right now we're just playing ladder. You don't really know where you're at, you play some good players maybe, because there's kind of some kind of hidden MMR apparently. But, uh, you don't really know what your, where you're at, how many games you played, what's your win rate, stuff like that, even though I know a lot of people don't really like stats and like in StarCraft II, I think they only show wins, maybe at some point, I don't know, how is it now, but at some point, I believe they only shown, uh, wins on your account, so maybe that would be one way to end all later anxiety, not sure, but, uh, yeah, most likely rankings would be, would be pretty, pretty nice.
By the way, Lado, nobody told you you had to dress up, I don't know why you're wearing a trash shirt dude. Could have just worn sweatpants like.
It's a job interview for Google.
I, I just got home from work.
You just got done fini- finishing doing the accounting on somebody or some?
I should have changed, I apologize, I apologize.
Personally, uh, I think like obviously the color bug has to go like as soon as possible, but yeah, I think having some, uh, some decent matchmaking and like stats and everything, the profile is the thing I care about the least, like I think the profile is like it could never come back, I wouldn't really care much, I know some people do and I understand, but for me, it's like not a priority. But yeah, I think, um, the, the matchmaking is like really tricky, right? Because we compare it with the StarCraft one. The thing is, on StarCraft, the player base is so much bigger than Warcraft III that you can't actually build up some matchmaking, like before. I don't know, it was, I think it must have been maybe W3 Arena, I think they had some sort of matchmaking and sometimes it would take like thirty, forty-five minutes to find a game if you're like high MMR and nobody's searching, before finally the matchmaking started to expand. And then you could meet other people, so that's a big problem, so it's like you, if you have to choose between one or the other, I guess for now Blizzard has chosen that there was not gonna be as much matchmaking and you can meet pretty much anybody, so you get a game quicker, you don't have to wait as much, but then the games can be really imbalanced in terms of skill, sometimes, uh, differential between two players, so it's you know, and now that we have that, uh, now that we have had that for a while, I feel like a lot of people they're saying, okay, like we've done that and it's not as fun, so maybe we would like to wait a little bit more and then get like stronger opposition and even though we're gonna have to wait and it sucks, maybe it's gonna be slightly better, so I don't know what you guys personally would prefer, but.
Yeah, like the thing is like when you're streaming, you like pretty much like you wanna keep the grind going, you know, like and the kind of guy was like, when I'm streaming, I'm gonna play at least thirty game minimum, so if I'm, if I'm playing, I wanna like play a game, restarted, play one more, play one more, so like, it feels like, it feels like an MMR and it's gonna take some time, it'll be like ten, fifteen minutes sometimes. And then you're like this and it feels like you lose the momentum of your stream and it feels like you're just pretty much losing like, uh, what you build with playing a lot of games, I don't know. But I'm guessing that since now it's like a global matchmaking, I'm guessing that even if you have like a some sort of a high MMR, it wouldn't take as long because you have the Koreans, you have the Europeans, you have, uh, yeah, you have NA as well, so, you know, you know, maybe I think it would be nice to test it. But the thing is that if you have an IMR, I mean, uh, you're gonna have to wait a bit more and sometimes you might like me, for example, when I play like pretty much at midnight, in the time, it's like a good time for Koreans to play. So then I could wait maybe ten minutes, then I'm gonna meet a guy in Korea and I'm gonna have four hundred ping against him. Almost like you're gonna leave the game because I think it's bored, so maybe I would rather some time play against an average like NA European player and have like good ping, like waiting ten minutes and then get some, something really bad. But you know, I, I'm saying this because I'm a good player and I, I know that like, I, I'm not one of these guys like a casual who was like going to probably lose his next ten games and meet, uh, somebody really good and have a really bad time, so I'm no trap. Like I'm really speaking for myself right now, but I think for the community would really much be better to have, uh, an MMR, I guess. But I like to have a lot of games to play when I'm streaming, so.
Wait, one thing I was thinking about, uh, before, before we started this talk show was that all four of us kind of have a, a limited perspective on Warcraft III, all four of us, we were all interested in just, you know, the one-on-one, maybe the two-on-two matchmaking system, we wanna play competitive games, we wanna have you know, easily found games, we wanna have as little lag as possible, we just want good, solid competitive games, that's, that's, all four of us want that. What I was thinking prior to this was that Blizzard probably did some internal playtesting where it's something like and I'm completely making up numbers here, so don't quote me on this, but maybe it's like something eighty or ninety percent of players, they go and they play the campaign and then after they finish the campaign, they might go play like one or two games on Battle.net and then that's it, they finish the game, they finish the campaign, they have fun and then they, they're, they're done, they're done with Warcraft III, it's like they beat it, you know? Um, so I, I think when we're talking about this, we have to keep in mind that Blizzard probably allocated those resources to the campaign knowing that the large majority of the player base was never even gonna touch Battle.net competitive play. But that also could not be the case, I'm, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, I mean, MMR is definitely necessary, I feel, cause personally, playing versus new players is really not fun. Cause sure, you can play any strategy, but, uh, it's, you're gonna probably win whatever you play, but you're gonna beat someone who's new, like who's putting his brew in front of his base and it's not fun for you nor for him. So we do need MMR. But, um, yeah, uh, then again, waiting ten minutes, I think that's what they did basically on the classic binet, right? They changed the MMR because it took too long to find games, so then all of a sudden they change it and you could play like a wide range of, wider range of players and I think that was pretty good. Uh, I think honestly, I've been, I've been following a lot of, uh, French streams lately, since Reforged and it seems there's a lot of new players, to be honest, for now, I don't know if they're gonna stick around, but at least on the French community, I've seen a lot of new players and they seem pretty motivated, obviously they are new, but they don't really know the game, they can't really compete or anything, but it's a good sign, I think, right?
Yeah, uh, what do you guys think of the actual graphics of Reforged, what it looks like when you, when you play with the Reforged graphics and all that?
Uh, you know, like at first when I started playing, it was like, like that's really garbage and then eventually I played a little bit more and I feel like I kept getting more used to it. But in the end, like the game is really hard to, to play, like it feels like you need like a ten thousand dollar computer, right, to play it and I played and it feels like maybe, maybe when the game's gonna be smoother and more optimizable, it's gonna be, maybe like it'd be more open-minded to put with the graphics, but I feel like for now it's unplayable, I think, I think it looks okay. But one thing that I actually like is when you're watching like other casters streaming a game and just streaming the new graphics, it feels like I got really used to it pretty quick as a viewer to play, to watch it, but when it feels to like playing with them, it feels like their box are different, it feels it feels like it's very dark, it feels like sometimes it's hard to know what's going on in fight. But from an observer perspective, I think, uh, I think it's amazing, I think the game is really, has really established itself. Already the Warcraft community, the people that were a little bit crying at first, like, oh my god, like go back to a classic graphic. But I think people are, are kinda already used to it in a way, like I'm not sure about you guys, if you're pretty much like, uh, like already accept that casters of Warcraft community, like, like back to Warcraft or whatever, like they're already playing with the new, uh, I mean, choosing like the new graphics, so I think I think for observing it's good, but for playing with them, I think there's room for improvement.
Uh, yeah, I agree, it's, um, they're, they're not easy to play with when, when you've been playing with the same graphics for you know, on and off over fifteen years and then all of a sudden you try to switch them, it's it's, it's still, I mean, I've tried it, I played maybe, I don't know, fifty games on the beta, more or less, and I, I was trying really hard to get used to it and it's, it's one of those things, I'll, I'll, I'll play it and it's like, maybe I'm getting used to it, maybe it's a little bit easier, I don't know, there's still that kind of that grayish, brownish hue where all the units blend together and anytime a fight is over fifty food, I just, I lose units, which is, it never feels good when you're, you know, you lose units in the field of view and then.
It still happens on Classic II for you, no?
Yeah, it does. Don't mention my career.
No, continue, yeah.
Um, but the, the second I switch back to the classic graphics, like, it kind of feels like everything is back in place, it just feels right again. Um, and it's honestly, it's the same with observing for me, because I'll, I'll watch like Back to Warcraft's cast and I'll watch it in Reforged and it's fine, I can follow it and it's, you know, it makes sense, but then immediately if I go to you know, another stream that's casting and I see the classic graphics, it's almost like candy to my eyes, it's like, oh my god, everything in the world makes sense again. So, um, yeah, I, I, right now, like, you know, another thing is each individual unit actually looks good on its own, it really does, I think, you know, that, that company Lemon Sky or whoever that, that ended up doing the graphics, I think they did a good job with it, the units look good for the most part, not, there's a couple that are a little bit weird. It's just when they're all together, it's, I don't know, it, it just kind of looks I don't, I don't even wanna say mushy, cause mushy's not the word, but it just, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right.
Yeah, it's crazy, I mean, like, like if you watch like the models, like they already like look really good and then when, when you like bring me the camera like zoomed out, you look at it like, what the fuck is this, like, is this the same? Is this the same thing I just saw like, like one second ago and then, I don't know, it's just like, like the contrast between the models and from the actual like gamer vision point of view is absolutely different, I'd say.
Yeah, definitely, but then again, I played the campaign, uh, with Reforged graphics and see, it looks really good for the campaign and watching Back to Warcraft or any streamers, it's also alright with new graphics. But playing it is definitely really tough, I feel, uh, I don't know, but if you tried but in solo, sometimes, yeah, it's really tough, like difference between ghouls and skeletons, it's really difficult to distinguish which is which. And, uh, yeah, I mean, most of it comes down to maybe colors, I'm not sure, like the models, as you said, they look really, really good by themselves, but from the top view, they just don't look too, too good.
Yeah, like personally, I'm somebody that adapts like very slowly, you know, like when I was a pro player in StarCraft II, I always took very long time to finally get good. Uh, at first I was always quite weak and then I would see like what everybody does and then I would start adapting, so it's, it's kind of hard for me and also I'm not a big fan of change. You know, like even when they do a revamp on like Facebook and on Twitter, I'm always like, okay, this is terrible, like it's gonna be such a so difficult to actually adapt to this and then after a few months, I don't even mind that much anymore, but I'll, I think that's also because, you know, even though I use these like daily, it's not an important, it's not the same as like you play a game for like so many years. Like all the time, I mean, obviously, I was like pro for many years and then I'm streaming for a couple years again. It's something that you do many hours every day and then suddenly it's like so changed, right? So I feel like for me I might never be able to switch to the Reforged graphics to play, but to watch, obviously, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's easier, I still haven't gotten used to it that much because even as watching, because I haven't played like a ton of Reforged graphics currently, I'm waiting for stuff like the color bug and stuff to be gone, because also I've played with allied colors my whole life, so it's like impossible for me to play without it, so either I play with allied colors and then my units have like two colors, which is very confusing or I play without it and then I can't see anything on the minimap if my opponent is like blue or something, so. It's been a little bit difficult to adjust, but yeah, well what do you guys think? Like, why would you compare it to having to adjust to, to something like this? Cause this is something that we do every day, right? We play Warcraft III, so this is like, if your mom or something like cooked you something a certain way your whole life and then one day she changed the complete recipe and it's like, it almost tastes like cooked something completely, it would be very hard for you to adapt to, right? It's like your favorite dish, you know, like she made you like a kish or something and then suddenly she's making like, I don't know, some other thing. And then like it's just so hard to adjust, it feels like for like the longest time, because you used of your favorite thing, which was already a certain way.
With it, like you grew up with it, like, they're, they're released like, like since young age, I started playing this game when I was eleven, like, like I've been playing this game more than half my life. I'm sure you started very young as well, I'm sure you guys, uh, Side and Lado started very young too, so like but I feel like, I feel like when the game's gonna be more optimizable, like I actually hope that I, at some point a game will be running as smooth as Classic, cause now like you're from Reforged to Classic and the Classic just feels better, it is, it is better, it's not just, it feels better, it is better, because like I see people with like the, the best computers and then they have like this, these FPS drops, they go from a hundred and fifty to like seventy and then it goes to like a hundred and twenty again, then it's just like keeps spiking, like a spike here and there, they get building in spikes and then I, I don't know, it just, I feel like maybe ultimately when everything's done, if that ever happens, by the way, cause everybody, everybody said like this stuff all the time, oh, like, oh, well, this is gonna be good, et cetera, but I think I think if one day it becomes as smooth as Classic, I think it is possible to move from Classic to Reforged, I think it just really takes time and like probably they're willing to do it. But, but like as long as like it bugs, it's gonna be weird, it does, like the DK is gonna be, uh, like, uh, five times bigger than any other hero, I think it's gonna be really, really weird to like just like get used to it, the fiends as well are pretty big, I know you hate the fiends, right?
Yeah, I think like the fiends is like one of the designs that I, I can't deal with, I just look at them and like nope, hell no, like this is, this just shouldn't look like this, I think it's probably the only one really that I look at and I'm like, no, no, no. I kind of have a hard time as well with that, I think the mountain king looks a little funny, but yeah, I, I'm just one of those people that just has a very hard time adapting and now because of the bugs, I've been playing mostly on net ease, so I'm kind of like switching back and forth, sometimes I'll play a little bit of Reforged, sometimes I'll watch a little bit. But I guess over time, maybe I'll get adjusted a little more. But yeah, it's, uh, it's a big jump, like from one day to another, to be like, oh yeah, suddenly we're like all in HD, everything looks like so flashy and stuff. What do you guys think of the passing? And also the hitbox, like do they feel similar enough to you and stuff? Cause that was, that was a big debate when StarCraft remastered came out, a lot of people thought that the passing was like different and stuff.
I, I think the, the passing feels close enough, um, Insub, you can probably chime in about surrounds and stuff, I know you go for surrounds a lot more than most of you, but um, the, the hitboxes are definitely way off with Reforged in terms of like the hero hitboxes, the building hitboxes, it just feels weird, it just doesn't feel right when you're clicking things. Um, it feels like you should be clicking your hero, like passing items between your heroes just feels awkward. I don't, I don't even know why, like sometimes it'll just drop on the ground instead of passing it to the hero, sometimes the hitbox of like your, your building versus like the tree, like when I'm trying to AOW creep for some reason, when you, like sometimes I'll try to eat the tree and the, the hitbox of the tree just is off for some reason. Or if the building is rooted, like I'm unable to target the tree above the building.
Could it be because it's, you're playing from a couch or?
No, no, this is when I'm on my desk.
Over the TV.
But, um, and like I've, I've like clipped it on stream and stuff too and it's, it's bizarre, it's, it's awkward, I'm, um, it doesn't happen with regular graphics and it does happen with Reforged graphics, I know it's supposed to just be a reskin, but I, those, the hitbox, it feels off.
Yeah, but you play with a sixty inches TV, like of course it's gonna be look bigger, like it's just.
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
It's something, it's, oh seventy-five, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I don't, I don't know, man, it feels like it boxes sometimes, like a little bit off, it feels like sometimes they're like right where they belong, like for example, like blocking, I think it's the same, like I'm sorry, like it feels like blocking feels the same, I'm not sure about you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you think? So I think it's the same.
Yeah, yeah, blocking feels the same, but hitbox, they do feel weird a little bit, I've been missing more cores than usual on Reforged, when playing Reforged, which not, it does not happen when I'm playing classic graphics. So yeah, I feel like there's like a bit of, uh, of a thing to fix here.
They get up items as well feels a bit different, like, like when you kill a creep and you try to pick item ASAP, it feel, it feels a bit different. Like I played with Classic against OC on the, on Reforged and it feels like I could always get the item before him and when we play in Classic, usually gets the item before I do, you know, so I, I'm not sure, it's almost like coincidence, but it, it just feels like I don't know, it feels like you're a little bit slower and I'm, I'm not sure, like it, it just feels, it just feels different, like, like to pick item on the ground.
I think one of the biggest challenges that they had with, with the scaling, so maybe the scaling is like directly involved, right? Some of the units, they're like smaller or bigger than they used to be. And that's what's causing that, like we have this impression of it should look like this and it, it should be executed like this, like what's been your experience side with all of this, like surrounds and?
Um, honestly, I don't feel like it changed much, uh, I mean, the unit sizes changed a bit, so yeah, it's, it's a little bit different, but blocking in general and surrounding hasn't been really different overall, it just, yeah, targeting trees, for example, as Lado said. Uh, when I, sometimes I play random and I, with Ancient of War, I couldn't target the tree to eat him, eat, eat it, that was pretty weird or picking up items sometimes also fit pretty weird with new graphics, so I'm not sure what did change there. But, uh, yeah, not so good.
What do you guys think about the new voices, the death voices?
I absolutely like them, I like them, at first I thought it was weird, but like eventually I just got used to it. Yeah, I, I like, I like them, I don't know, I like them, I actually like, especially if there's some dying sound, oh my god, I love that sound. I love it.
What about the archer?
The archer sounds like, uh, yeah, like watching a eighteen plus movie maybe, but, uh, hey dude, I, I don't know, man. I, I can't be against that, I, I love it personally.
I, I, yeah, the death sounds, I like them, yeah, the one thing I don't like is, um, there are certain units and they use multiple death sounds for that one specific unit, I, I think it should just be one sound. I understand they're trying to create some variation, but you're you, you get used to hearing those sounds and you associate it with something, like whether or not you know it or not, but um, like when you hear it, like when I hear a huntress die, I know that huntress is dead based on that sound, or like if I hear a fiend die, I know based on that sound that that fiend died and you don't necessarily have to see it and just, um, associating those sounds with what happened, I think is important, so I like the new death sounds, I think they're, they're fine, I like that they're trying to switch it up, but I think they should just have one death sound per unit and I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you guys are optimistic, like, uh, Blizzard made a post where they talked about, you know, there's gonna be a patch and all that, it's like, were you guys able to read all of this and what did you think about it?
Uh, you're, you're talking about the developer update thing that they released?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to swear on stream?
I think you've watched my stream, so you know the answer to that.
A, a lot of it was just bullshit.
Yeah?
Yeah, I, it felt like a lot of it was kind of PR bullshit, um, it didn't, it didn't feel sincere. It didn't feel like they were taking the blame for what, for what was basically a, and a terrible release. Um, like they should have, they should have started off by saying, I'm sorry, like nowhere in the, nowhere in that thing listed on did it say, I'm sorry, it said, we are sorry for those of you that didn't have the experience you wanted, so it kind of like, it put it on the viewer, or sorry, I put it on the, like the player, not the developer, it's like it was your fault for expecting. It's like, it was your fault for expecting too much, but that's, our expectations were set by Blizzard themselves based on the last two years. And you know, that either the, the very little information or the lack of information that we had. So I think, uh, not delivering, like they should have said, I'm sorry that we didn't deliver up to the expectations of what, um, of what we promised in the last two years. If they started with that, I think that the whole, the whole post would have had a much different feel to it. But literally reading that first paragraph and reading, we're sorry that you didn't have the experience that you, you wanted through the rest of the, the rest of that update, I just read, I, I read it through a very skeptical lens. And I was just like, what are you trying to say here? This is, and, and a couple, and if we're gonna break it down paragraph by paragraph, there were like one or two, there's, I think two paragraphs in there that are, that are just total bullshit, like 100% bullshit. And then a couple of them, it says what they're working on and I guess that's good. Um, I, I like, I liked that they said, we're, we're allocating resources towards Warcraft and we plan on, um, we plan on supporting it for the long term. That's good news. That is, I mean, no matter how you interpret that, that's good. But there, there were certain, certain ways that, that they addressed the community that, uh, I don't know, it just kind of rubbed me the wrong way.
I barely read the message, honestly. I was just still telling, I was like, okay dude, like, oh, we're sorry for the expectation. Just like this, this literally like typical like Blizzard, I division, like greedy money company answer that you expected to get pretty much. Like of course we're gonna have like, like high expectations. It's a remaster, it's a new game. Like Warcraft is already like a, like a perfect game in my opinion, like it, it, it's just amazing. It feels like, of course, like we had the expectation to the game to be good. It feels like they just screwed up something that felt like unscrewable pretty much. And I think it's pretty more normal for like, for like us to just like be disappointed with it. I don't know. I actually didn't like the answer. I feel like, uh, I wish they gave more information on like when, like the ranks coming, like pretty much like the most asked question right now in the, in the community. I, actually, I'm not, uh, I wasn't a big fan. It was the most what I expected.
I can just imagine you're in sub starting to read this and you're like, oh, this is too long. And then back to the lobby, get right back to ladder immediately.
So then I was like, okay dude, is, is it gonna be a date for rankings? And I was like, oh, the ranking? Okay dude, back to Warcraft. Uh, uh, no, but seriously, I, I, it was just, I don't know, it was expected. It was really expected. I wish they just said that it needed more time and where it would be more wellness.
Yeah.
And then instead of taking the, like the, the buyers for idiots, it'd be like, I'm sorry for next, like no, dude, like I, it just feels like they rushed the game and they put a date when, having a date was, they were like the biggest mistake. And they just pushed themselves to revisit the, the game because of like, uh, legal issues and stuff like that. You know, like, like you cannot keep, uh, postponing. It's why you were a little bit more honest with pretty much what happened instead of just trying to, just try to like just camouflage it by pointing the fault on the buyers and be like, oh yeah, you guys expected a little bit more, you know? Cause like they don't really look at themselves in the mirror and try to sit true.
Yeah, I do agree with both of you. But at some time I was pretty happy about, uh, finally having some news, even though, yeah, it was bunch of, uh, most of it was not really interesting nor, uh, I don't know what to say, but honestly, it's still nice that they actually released something and give, give, uh, they gave us some kind of dates at least or fixing some bugs later that week. Hopefully that's gonna happen, cause if it doesn't, that would be pretty bad. But so yeah, I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic here, even though I know it's the message by itself, it doesn't say much. And I guess most people are not really happy about, uh, about it. But still, I think it's, uh, it's good. At least they're saying something, you know?
Yeah, I agree. It's at least something, right? Like I was really worried actually when Reforged came out and then we saw like, a lot of people immediately, they're like, alright, this is really, it's a disaster. We want refund, like we were never gonna hear about the game again and stuff. And then now they actually addressed it pretty quick, you know, like it, we weren't sure, right? Like you don't know, like when you, when are you gonna hear from, I mean, do they have to like?
Yeah, they have to. It's a fucking million dollar company, like a billion dollar company. It literally sounds like, like probably like, 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 like copy, like customers are very angry, like, like all over the place on social media. I think it's, it is the least for a company such as Blizzard to come up with it, with a, with something ASAP. Like they come up with something like two weeks later. It's like an indie company. It's a big company that people like, they literally sell a game for 30, 40 dollars, like, I was like, whatever country you're from, I think it is the least that they actually come up with a message. It's, it's, it, it should be something that we should be like, like feel privileged about. It's just, it's a must. It is a must. I'm sorry, it's a must for me.
Yeah, I'm hoping that they will keep up, you know, with the updates, with fixing everything that needs to be fixed. And then eventually that we have like a walking MMR, walking ladder and everything, like, you know? Obviously, it wasn't the greatest launch of a game, but we can still be hopeful. Like Warcraft 3, like I said, is still Warcraft 3. Like if you're a Warcraft 3 enthusiast, just because, you know, Reforged had like a rough launch, you don't want necessarily be like, alright, well, that's, that's it for me, you know, I'm gonna go and play like some other RTS. No, like there is no other good RTS out there last I checked, other than Starcraft. And both games are like coexisting and like both games are made by Blizzard, like, you know, like, I feel actually, the people that watch and play Warcraft 3, usually they are different than Starcraft. I don't think that there's that many people that follow very actively both games, you know, like it's pretty time consuming and everything. But yeah, like these are like the two main games, so I guess like, maybe there will be some people like that that will be like, okay, I'm gonna switch to Starcraft, but I doubt it. I feel like if you, if you're a Warcraft 3 enthusiast, chances are, regardless of the way Reforged launched, you're probably gonna stick around and keep on watching and keep on playing the game.
Oh yeah, yeah. Just to, to draw another comparison to another Blizzard game, but Overwatch in their community department, they do a great job in terms of releasing patches and releasing why they're doing patches and, you know, the, the reason for what they're doing. And I don't, they, I don't know, that, um, the, the point I'm trying to make is that the, it's already there, like Blizzard has it. They know how to do it. They know how to do it well, but for whatever reason, it's like, it's, it's lacking with Warcraft. And I don't, I guess it is a classic game. It's an older game, so, um, yeah.
Uh, maybe it's also about money. I mean, the bigger the company grows, then you have like shareholders deciding what kind of game. I mean, which one is most profitable and basically Warcraft 3, I don't think it gives a lot of money compared to Overwatch or World of Warcraft or Hearthstone. So I guess, and I believe the team, the dev team was pretty small too. And all of those things makes Warcraft 3 Reforged the way it is. Maybe, I mean, I'm just speculating, so I'm not, I don't really know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we are all optimistic though. I mean, the, it is a game that we're still gonna keep playing. Like we all jumped through hoops to play it, you know, we've all played on, if you're super old school, you remember like the old G Arena days or the GG, you know, GG client? And then after that, it was the W3 Arena and then it was, uh, now it's Netties, right? And you have to like go through so many hoops just to be able to play the game at a high level and get those high level competitive games. Uh, and, and we've all been doing that, so, and you know, I said this earlier on the talk show, but we have to remember that we are looking at this through a very, um, you know, we have a very small scope in terms of all four of us are kind of looking at the game in the same way.
Yeah, very critical.
Yeah, okay. I think we can add more about this subject later on, but let's talk about, uh, our next, next subject, which is gonna be the Back to Warcraft Reforged Invitational, uh, which was launched literally, or it happened a day after Reforged was launched. And that featured Foggy, Cash, Thorzane and Terror. There was a thousand dollars on the line. So it's pretty risky to organize a tournament like this, you know, a day after a ton, after a game has launched, obviously.
It was good. There was a success pretty much overall. A little bit of problems, but I think it went pretty well. It was a good event.
Did you guys catch all of the games and stuff and what did you think?
I didn't see all the games, um, I think I saw, uh, Cash versus Foggy, which ended pretty quick, but, uh, I don't know, I think it was a good tournament. Uh, you know, you have like four good players, one of each race. Back to Warcraft winning the money and different and trying to, to bring like good attention to, like, like, like to the competitive scene as soon as possible. So I think it's good, like instead of waiting one week after, I guess as a game drops, they invite like four of the, of the best European player, like maybe Terry, we gotta say he's not as good as Foggy or whatever, but he's still a very good player. And you, you have like these four players coming right away. You show people what competitive Warcraft is in 2020. People, maybe they haven't seen a competitive game like 10 years, they come there, they see Foggy, they see Cash, which they probably remember from six years ago. And who was the guy Hawk? Is that was Hawk? Did you remember? Uh, Thorzane, but there's also in old school, he plays Starcraft, so I think you already have some good names on the screen. I think it brings some good attention right away. We need the graphics as well. Of course, I think it had a bit of an issue with the custom games and it was a little bit lag at first. But I think overall it was a pretty successful, uh, it was a big tournament in my opinion. Uh, I enjoy watching it.
Yeah, um, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, the Back to Warcraft did a great job. They, it was obvious they wanted to be, you know, one of the first big invitationals. You know, and when I say big, I mean, just has a, a nice sized prize pool for the, for the players. Um, right out of the gate and just kind of jumping on that, uh, the competitive scene. But being able to show the, the new players what, you know, competitive Warcraft looks like and inviting one, one person from each race and all four are relatively equal, uh, skills. I think, I think in sub you mentioned, Foggy I think is a little bit higher than, than everyone else. And so I'm, I'm actually kind of surprised that Thorzane, I don't know, either, either way, it's four really, really solid European players. Um, and to, yeah, to organize it for a game that's being dropped and to not know anything about the game and, and for it to come out and then to try and make it happen, uh, no, Back to Warcraft did, did a great job. It was, it was fun. It was fun to watch. It ran well. Good games came out of it. They got good viewership. I think it was good for everyone.
Yeah. Uh, I think we can talk a little bit about some of the cups also that happened, uh, last week, like we got like a lot of weekly cups now, uh, so every Friday, there is the Ridmore Cup. Every Saturday, there is the Rising Star Cup. And every Sunday, there is now the ESL Pro Tour which launched. So I think we, we can actually talk a little bit about, uh, the ESL Pro Tour in a, in a moment, but first, I think the Rising Star Cup is the main one that's like become, like instantly one of the crowds' favorites, right? It's like Back to Warcraft have done a really good job advertising that and like already making a cup which gets like a hundred plus participating, participating.
That's insane. They're, they're averaging like 150 now. It's really good.
Yeah.
But, um,
And Happy is like, uh, he's having some meetings at the bank. They're like, keep those coming. Well, you'll get a loan soon for an apartment, like.
He's stacking those rebels.
It's the, it's the happy phone. If, is there a mile system in this? Cause he's gonna get a car real soon out of it, like.
Oh yeah.
He has one, how many? Eight or nine in a row now?
I, I, I see Wiz in chat is saying, what I was gonna say. Um, but it, it reminds me of the old Zotac Cups and the Zotac Cups were the place to be back in the day. They were so, they were so much fun. I, it was only for 100, I think it was a hundred dollars per Zotac Cup. Was, was it the amount of money that was put up?
First place.
But every, it was around the world, so everyone got up. So if you were on the east coast or, or the west coast, I, I remember I would wake up at five in the morning to play in these stupid cups. Because it started, you know, at whatever time, but it was everyone in the world was playing at these cups at the same time. And it didn't matter what your skill level was, you entered this cup and your goal wasn't, at least for me, your goal wasn't to win the tournament. And that's kind of one thing I wanted to chime in on about this too, but your goal wasn't to win the tournament. It was to see how far you got in the tournament and when you played against someone who, you know, was known or really good or one of those pro players, see how you match up against them, like see how you do. Um, but the, the one, so for that reason, I love it. I think it's great for the community. I hope more people enter it. There's a lot of people that don't enter those tournaments just for fear of losing. And I think that's a really bad attitude to have. Don't be afraid to lose. Who cares? There's only one person who's gonna win and it's most likely gonna be Happy every single week.
Most likely, there's a good chance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That does, but, but my, my point is that doesn't matter. It, it, seriously, it doesn't matter. The point is, is like, you get some good experience playing against good players and you get that tournament experience. And it's a lot of fun. It's free to enter. So if you're out there and you're not sure if you should enter, enter it because the more players, the more fun it is, um, your skill level doesn't really matter. But yeah, the, uh, I wanted to say that Happy winning every single week and all these people calling it Happy Cup and Happy's gonna win, who cares? Who cares if Happy wins every week?
We care.
Because, okay, well, well then I wanna hear.
I'm sick and tired of.
I'm tired seeing you too, man. I'm tired, man.
Well then beat him, then beat him.
I tried.
Uh, yeah, easy. Yeah, I told you, you beat him last time. What happened?
Yeah, I tried. I got wrecked.
I lost to like the week before.
Look at, look at Sid smiling. Sid made him one round before me.
Yeah, I tried, but I got destroyed.
Sid almost did it once though with his dreadlord. I think it was Rising Cup. I saw him get on dreadlord, it was an auto now, it was best of one. And he came so close to do it. I was, I was rooting for him, so I almost did it.
There was a lot of upsets, by the way. There was a lot of upsets in this one. Uh, in sub, you beat Foggy. Usually he always makes it to the finals and then loses to Happy. I think that we can call that an upset and, uh, Hawk lost to Spiral. I mean, obviously Spiral's very good, but it's kind of same thing, you know, Hawk, unless he meets, usually loses to Happy, right? Every time. I feel like we've almost had the same story almost every single time in those cups. Uh, Blade lost to Bizarre, which was strange, you know, I was like, I was getting ready to play Blade and then I'm, I'm like, okay, you gotta play Bizarre. So yeah, there was a lot of upsets, like it seems like in the scene of people that are competing, you know, I don't know if we should call everybody a pro, obviously, cause not many people are actually making necessarily a living out of playing Warcraft 3. But a lot of the competitive scene seems like motivated and like everybody's playing and we're trying to beat each other and stuff. So it's nice to see a few upsets here and there. Sadly, the biggest one of them all didn't happen. Nobody was able to really challenge Happy in this one, but it's fun. Lado, did you play?
Yes. Uh, I don't think I played this past week. I think I played the week before. I entered.
Look at you sitting on the couch, guys. You're gonna play Rising Star Cup and you don't even play.
If I'm home, if I'm home at the time it starts, then I play in it. It just depends on, yeah, it depends on my schedule. But, um, the, the thing that makes these tournaments fun are the upsets. If there weren't upsets, it would be so boring. Yeah, I mean, I was like, I was popping off with in sub when in sub beat Foggy. I love Foggy. I play Night Elf. But seeing in sub beat Foggy, come on, man, that's, that's like awesome. That's so great. So I don't, but it's games like that that make these tournaments fun.
It's pretty fun for sure. You know, like it's good for the stream as well. You're like, you're streaming your game against good players and then you, like you make these upsets. I think like it's, it's a good way to bring like new viewers to your audience, especially like it's not like a Friday, so like Saturday. So like people are like home, they're just watching, uh, like the biggest stream like Back to Warcraft and then you're like, hey, like, who's this guy? But then like maybe you can, somebody can be Sid, it can be me, it can be anyone else. And then he's just come to your stream and then they find new streamers. So I, I, I think it's just good for the community as, as well to like these tournaments. It's like so many of them lately as well, like I think it was like five or six tournaments this week. Like, uh, there was like XLM Cup, there was a GG Easy Cup today. The, the Abuse Cup, there's an ESL Cup, there's a Rising Star and there's a Reforged Open Cup. Number two is gonna happen. Uh, I, I'm not sure. I think tomorrow, I'm, uh, not too sure, but, uh, it, it, it's really nice, you know, like, uh, has a player who wasn't competitive like 10 years ago and the game was popping. I feel like it's really cool and it makes me like, pretty much like, I'll explain, it, it, it feels like the game is alive again pretty much. Cause like back into as well of tournaments and then when I came like, like, like four or five years ago and started playing like competitively, there's like no tournament. So it was like this, we see a tournament once a year and that's it. So what are you doing, Lado?
I'm kicking my shoes off.
It's cool, man. It, it, it gives you like a nice, a fresh vibe. I'm, I'm sure you guys who played like back then too, you probably feel like the game feels like probably 2018 or something. Gives like the old vibes. That's nice.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we've seen a lot of people complain since, since Reforged came out about Warcraft 3, saying it's dead or whatever. But, uh, we never had so many weekly cups and I think even like the last cup on Sunday, uh, which was ESL Cup, I think like the final was really, really amazing for, oh, Foggy almost beating, uh, Happy. And I think Back to Warcraft had like 6k viewers, which is really, really good. So.
Well, I mean, at this point, when Happy loses, it's gonna be a historical event. It's like, where were you, you know?
Yeah, exactly. That's why we're sitting here, yeah.
Something else to note is that, that, just the increase in viewership across the board. Uh, I think Twitch as a whole, there's just more people interested in Warcraft. Warcraft has never been more alive. So despite all of the pitfalls that we, you know, we kind of started this talk show a little bit on a depressing note with all of the pitfalls that came with Reforged, but seriously, talking about Warcraft as a whole, the game has never been more alive. Three, three weekly cups that, you know, are getting 100 plus entrance for, I mean, it's like, that's, that's awesome. You, you can't ask for better than that.
I mean, it's probably soon gonna be seven, like at this point, we're, we're running out of days. Like we need to add an extra day in the week to put more cups, cause everybody wants to have a cup running. And, uh, yeah, this one is definitely pretty interesting as well. A lot of competition. That was the first one of the new ESL Pro Tour, which is, you know, it's very serious business. You just talk about Warcraft doing well. That's one of the things that we had happen. The ESL Pro Tour was announced. And I guess, I, I hadn't put it on the list of subjects, but we can actually go, uh, check out the website here.
Sure.
And, uh, talk about this as well. So ESL Pro Tour is basically being run by DreamHack Warcraft Open in association with ESL. So a lot of it goes through the ESL website for like the cups, but the offline we, events will be at several of the Dreamhacks that already have been announced. I think it's Anaheim to start with and then there's gonna be Young Shopping in Sweden at, at DreamHack also and Rotterdam also. Oh, they used the Muslim for the photo. I didn't even realize at first. So 200,000 in prize money in total, like there's some very nice video on the website that explains how it works. And then the whole system is broken down there. And the first one is coming up very soon, 15 days. And the first one is coming up very soon. 15 days until Anaheim happens. We already know the invites for this. It's the top four of the last WGL. So that was Romantic. Happy, you guys remember?
Lynn.
And TH, yeah, and TH. Those are the four that were invited for it. Hopefully, they can all make it. And yeah, I think it's like, I didn't expect this at all, you know, like I found out about this a little bit before it was announced. And when I got told that Warcraft 3 is getting a circuit with offline tournaments and stuff, I was obviously buzzing like I thought. It's amazing. I never thought that actually would come, but I think it's like. Really, really cool that we have this. So what were you guys thought about this and how much of it do you plan to participate in?
I'll start. I think it's really amazing, honestly. I've never expected it to become so big. I mean, we had WGL and. Similar like GCS, I think, WCA from Furios when I was not active anymore, so I don't really know, but. I didn't expect to have like such a big, uh, big circuit. It's like four events with 25k dollars plus. One big, big event with 100k. Dollars. So I think it's really amazing. Plus, having so many lands in Europe is also really amazing because everything happened in China. Even like one in NA is pretty cool as well, I think, because it's gonna bring a bit of motivation, I think, to NA. Because I feel like they don't, they kind of left out, you know, most of the tournaments that happen at. Either a good time for Europe, but it's not really suitable for NA. So that's pretty cool. And I plan to do every, every, every event in Europe if possible. Yeah, definitely.
But not Anaheim?
Nah, it's too too soon, too far.
Okay.
I don't know if it's anything for now for Anaheim, but yeah, I mean, it would be amazing to go. I mean, if I had a chance to go, I'll go. But I think it's pretty cool, you know, like that ESL comes out of nowhere. Like honestly, like personally, I never heard about it and I. Definitely didn't expect it. I know, I thought you said you pretty much like had some information about it in the back, but. And then Starcraft announced like a 1.8 million. So of course, if you compare like Warcraft prize pool to Starcraft coming with 1.8 million, you're like, yes, finally, it's not that big, but I think. I think it's like a good start. At least we have this. I think we pretty much didn't expect this, so it's a good start and hopefully that those tournaments goes well and then maybe we bring more attention. To the game and yeah, I think I think it can be better game, honestly. Pretty excited to see American competition and Europe especially. I just wish you had a little bit more tournaments in North America. Like I see in Germany especially, they have like these LAN tournaments and then Russia, like it's so easy like to travel to. So yeah, I hope we have some more, some more tournaments in America. That would be, that would be really nice because I feel like we're being left out a little bit and we need a bit more love.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's it's great for the community. I, one thing I wanted to say about America is. Americans have kind of been on the rise a little bit with the the global gap closing and, you know, more people playing on net ease and more people participating in these. More global cups, you know, we're seeing the rise of people like Hitman and Cruncher and yeah, I mean, I mean, even even In sup, In sup just smashed Foggy last week. That was like. We're seeing some American players. I know just one game, but still, I mean, like. To to have an American player beat a top European player in the past, that really didn't happen unless you were, you know, I mean, we we had we had a few over the last 10 years. I don't I don't want to. Exclude people like, you know, Longwalk and Sonki, who Longwalk has actually been playing and. Even Milk Narf going back and Wizard. But anyway, I'm going off on a tangent, but the American scene has been. Pretty alive and it's it's good to see and I like seeing an American tournament. It wasn't out very quickly, so it's hard to. Kind of organize everything and get travel out there. So I'm not participating in it. If I threw my name in a hat to try and be a broadcast, like an announcer, a co caster for it. But I haven't heard anything yet. So ESL, if you're listening, shoot me a message. I'm waiting for you.
Get this man in.
I want to cast it. You saw the two question marks next to Back to Warcraft. I want to see my my face up there, but I know that I know that that might be.
You're already dressed for it as well.
I am. I'm ready. I'm ready. Look at me. I got my microphone.
I'm just probably that.
Suitcase is packed.
I'm ready, but no, I can't really justify spending a bunch of money. I I've I'm gonna be just personally, I'm gonna be a dad soon, so I'm trying to. Yeah, with a kid on the way, I can't really justify spending, you know, upwards of 500 to 1,000 dollars to go. Play in the tournament, but the. The other thing I wanted to say was another community that I was active in. I'm not as active in it anymore as the Super Smash Brothers Melee community. Which is kind of a really cool story because the it's a game similar to Warcraft, actually, because it's a game that's 15 years old. And it stuck around and people to be able to play that game even, you had to like carry these big ass CRT TVs from your car. Into like these tournament venues and it was stinky because no one showered and it was like, but people loved it. Like it was great. And I used to go to all those tournaments and I. I played on like the OSU Melee group for a long time and I was like on the leaderboards in Ohio with the Melee group. But those tournaments are now massive, absolutely massive and it's one of the biggest fighting games that are that exist. And I'm hoping that this spotlight that ESL is shining on Warcraft. Creates a similar effect for Warcraft 3 because Warcraft 3 doesn't even have all of those barriers that. Super Smash Brothers Melee has in terms of having to play with a guy sitting right next to you and, you know, we can play online and and. From the comfort of our couch at home. So we, I'm hoping that this this tournament is the first, kind of like what I think it was In sup was saying. About just, this is just gonna be a springboard for let's see how this tournament goes. Hopefully, it goes really well and attracts a lot of really good attention. And I'm hoping that the this blows up the Warcraft community in a good way, in a good way, of course.
Okay, let's just, I want to ask you guys a totally random question. Happy is bound to lose at some point in one of those online cups. So you guys need to give me your bets. You can think about it for a little bit, but who do you think is gonna be the one to beat Happy finally in a tournament? Foggy actually got somewhat close in the last tournament. Like he was a 3-2. And he was like pretty competitive. Is that some competitive? So I feel like the. The save bet almost is to save Foggy, but I don't know if there is a save bet, so.
Well, do you mean like a best of five, best of two? Because like I feel like best of one, anybody can do it, but like. Because like Blade beat Happy the best of one, like that's horrible, right?
Let's do both, actually.
Like, do you mean like best of two, best of five? Because I think I think best of one, like, yeah, you could like Spiral, Hitman, maybe even Sid, like Sid, like I think it's so many players that can take him out, like. No, I'm saying like best of one, like Sid definitely, like he's a good player, man. He could really take him down on one day, you know? Like I said, best of one, you'd like one game out of like 50, whatever. But I think we said best of one, I think any org was like decent cash or whatever. But if we're talking best of three, best of five, honestly. I think my answer is gonna be boring. Like I would, I would like to say like maybe Spiral, because Spiral did really, really good against him last time. That was the first time they met. Spiral was like a really good farcey player. He seems to be pretty confident in Sun Dead regardless of who he's playing. Hitman also did pretty good when he met him in tournament. He lost 2-0, but I feel like Hitman could have adjusted some stuff and could have won. So I, and and the last time I saw Foggy was Happy, because like Foggy is a guy who meets Happy the most. And he's always in final, like Spiral's always in final, as in Foggy, and Hitman doesn't play much. So I think I'm gonna, I'm just, I'll just say Foggy. Because Foggy is always in final. He's gonna meet it. He always beats him. And I feel like one time is gonna break your curse. And last time with Mass Archer, he looked really, really good. I think he could have really took down a series. So I'm gonna have to go with Foggy. Yeah, that's my, that's my answer.
I'm I'm a Foggy fan too, so my biased opinion, obviously, I'm a Night Elf player too, so my biased opinion goes to Foggy. He was so. Close in that last series, like there was, there was that one, it was on Amazonia where Happy was pushing Foggy's expo and. Foggy, or sorry, Happy had his DK like around the left side of the trees there by the expo and both the DK and the Lich TP'd out with like less than 10 HP. And if either one of those hero kills went through, I'm fairly certain Foggy would have ended up winning that game. I was like, shit, Foggy's gonna do it. I was like, this is gonna be it. It was so close. I was like, oh, man. So yeah, my my vote is to Foggy just because he has gotten the closest. And another, another thing that Foggy is doing is he's trying to be innovative. He's trying new things to specifically beat Happy. So we've seen him try. You know, the Keeper air, you know, Keeper mass air stuff, but I actually don't think that's any good anymore. And then he's, his new thing is now the triple hero with mass archers, but he's kind of mixing up which heroes he's using. So in the past, he actually, he was using. Keeper and then he was doing like Naga, Potom or Keeper Alchemist. You know, he, I've actually seen him do a lot of different combos in terms of that triple hero, but. The triple hero mass archer thing, he's he's experimenting with it. He's trying new things and the fact that he's really, I can tell he's focused on beating Happy. It's obvious. He's he's trying. Really, really hard to diversify his undead matchup. I think it's just a matter of time before he does end up taking a set away from Happy.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I guess in the best of five is the one with the closest. I'm sorry, it's a bit boring because we all have the same answers. But in the best of five, I guess Foggy could do it. In a best of three, though, I would say Spiral could do it and also Neutron. Neutron took one map. I mean, he lost the last two best of threes against Happy, but he took one map every time. So I think he's been, he's been practicing a lot. He's been doing pretty well, risk extended. So yeah, maybe Neutron. In a best of three, best of five, probably not, but.
I'm hoping that one of my human bros actually can do it, like Hawk, Thorzane, Blades, you know, like. I feel like in the past, they've won games for sure from Happy, whether it was in series or like on net ease in multiple places, you know? So I'm hoping one of them, maybe Death Note even, like if they, actually, they don't even have to win, you know, if they get like, let's say like a 3-2, you know, I'd be pretty happy if one of them got a 3-2. Because then they would have win one, two games that I could, you know, just watch. And draw inspiration from. I mean, on paper, I guess, yeah, Anorak or Foggy is more likely to beat him.
With that matchup, Happy has, and this is just gonna sound like an echo chamber of what Todd says on his stream, but Happy has that matchup figured out. It's. I I don't see a human taking a best of five against Happy.
Actually.
Unless the, unless they, unless they like diversify their strategies and try something different. Like the last time we saw, I I think it was Tanks, right? The last time we saw, it was Sock beat him with Tanks, right? Or correct me if I'm wrong, I don't. But I think that was the last time that Happy.
Well, Sock got destroyed last time he played against Happy. That's why In sup tears blown. He was in feet that one again.
I remember, I remember.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I couldn't, I couldn't remember who it was, but my my point is, is that they were, they were trying something different, like they were doing a new strategy, like that that standard. You know, the standard meta, which is you expo and then you get your footmen, you get defend, you buy time, get your towers up. Happy has that figured out. Like he's, I don't think he's gonna lose to that. I really don't. I think. I think to beat Happy, you have to catch him off guard with human. I don't think a human will beat him in a best of five in the near future.
And go ahead, Sid.
I was, I was gonna say, you mean in Europe? Because in Asia, it's definitely possible, the best of five.
Yeah, the the thing is, he doesn't play against Asians that frequently.
Yeah, not so much, yeah.
So it would have to be, you know, you know, it would, you know, Infie or Thu or, you know, Sock or Romantic. Those are the names that come to mind, but they would have to. They would have to actually play against each other and for them to play against each other would most likely be an in-person tournament and those in-person tournaments don't. Yeah, I I don't know. I I would like to see it happen. Don't get me wrong. I would like to see it happen. I think it's fun to see upsets like I talked about before. But I'd be very, very surprised if a human then ends up taking the crown from Happy.
Do you guys think that maybe people understudy Happy? Because like he does go for like a similar build and similar creep route in a lot of his games and he's kind of known for that. It feels like in an RTS, maybe less so in Warcraft 3 than Starcraft, but he's Starcraft. If somebody does the same build all the time, like they are not gonna go very far. In fact, Happy, Happy was a Starcraft 2 pro and he never really had like. Some insane performance or didn't do nearly as well in Starcraft as he's doing in Warcraft 3. So do you guys maybe think. Happy is understudied by a lot of, you know, players that are trying to beat him?
That's a good question, actually. I feel, I feel like in Europe and like and they combined, I feel like Happy has been dominant for so long, it feels like everybody takes a granted, Happy's gonna win and like nobody tries to like beat him anymore. Like nobody's gonna try, you know what? I'm gonna study Happy. I'll try to find like, like something in his build. And then you go in Asia. And then you have Happy who doesn't play very often against 120 and all these people, XLM ladder, right? And then you see 120 who keeps losing against Happy, but 120 keeps always trying to study. And come up with something different. He tries ZK goals, he tries guards, he tries expansion, so stuff like that. And the last time they played, he actually played a Nagasack and another mirror and he played aggressive and he actually printed his own app in his base. And he beat, he beat Happy to zero, you know? So it feels like you could definitely tell that 120 definitely tried to. Like study Happy and come up with something, especially for just for the Happy matchup. But it feels like in Europe, like you watch Hawk and you watch other guys and it feels like. Maybe Foggy right now is trying to new stuff. It feels like Happy was kind of. Kind of done at some point. He was, he just gave up. He's just like. Like to respond. It feels like lately he's trying like Mass Archer and he just stopped playing Keeper, like thanks God, finally he stopped playing his Keeper. He plays the mountain now. He's like trying to be more versatile. So I think, I think, I think definitely it's definitely understudied and the Western scene. But I think in, I think in Asia, you know, like Infie and TH, like Lynn, they're always gonna try to study him and they're gonna try to.
It just seems like a lot of people are focused on themselves. Like everybody's thinking about what am I gonna do? What's gonna be my strategy? My heroes? How am I gonna creep? How am I gonna play aggressive? And I feel like not, perhaps not enough people are watching Happy's replays and trying to study every single timing and then I will go there, you know, and do this and counter his composition like that and stuff. Like obviously, you know. He plays Sun Dead, right? In most matchups, it's gonna be pretty straightforward. He's gonna open nest knights, go into a lich, go for the standard composition, then hit certain timings. But I really feel like there would be a lot of merits to actually studying very closely exactly what he does. And I think like. The top Chinese as of late, in my opinion, have done that. And that's what brought success to. To Infie when he played against him, to 120 recently, who played extremely well against Happy.
Yeah, I think at at that S tier of player, you know, that super upper echelon of of competitive players. They really do focus on just what is the best thing. No matter what my opponent is doing. Like I don't care what they're doing. I'm gonna do the best thing that I know is the best for me. And then I know whatever they're doing, at least I'm doing the best thing. A lot of people have that attitude. I know there was actually an interview with Hitman the other day. And I know he's not like super duper S tier, but he's up there. I mean, he's like, he's a really, really strong player and his attitude is, I don't care what the other guy is doing. I know my creep routes. I know my unit compositions. And I'm, I'll just adjust to what my opponent is doing and I'm just gonna do what I know is the best and most optimal. Thing on any given map. So and I I think a lot of players at that super top level have that same attitude. And when you're talking about someone who's as dominant as Happy in these cups, I think it's a great idea to try and study him and maybe do something that. Might be a little bit suboptimal, but it's optimal against Happy.
What's Happy's Twitch again?
Yes, it's at me.
I also have something to add regarding Happy. Personally, when I, and maybe it's, I feel like it's a case with other people playing Happy in Europe. I feel like we respect him a bit too much when we play against him. I mean, that's at least my case. When I do play against him, I have trouble. Bringing my A game because I'm always kind of afraid of what's coming, you know, because I know it's Happy, so he could just do whatever and beat me. So I'm always like being either too defensive or not taking enough risks. So maybe that's, I feel like when I watch him play sometimes against people that I lose to, I feel like they're not as aggressive or they let him. Come back at certain points. Because they either respect him too much or I don't know.
They get stressed pretty much. Like I said, as like you start winning or it feels like they have a chance. It feels, it feels like you're like, I'm gonna beat Happy, you know, it's just like an accomplishment almost, you know? And then it feels, it feels like you're a bit scared of like playing your your real game and sticking to what you do. I think it's also the fact that you was the last 20 game against them, that you're you're kind of, like you don't usually against someone so much, you feel, almost feel like they're unbeatable at some point and you, you just. I don't know, man. Hey, a mental block pretty much.
You guys talked about how Foggy at some point, it felt like, you know, he was just doing the same thing and stuff. He just kind of accepted that he was gonna be really hard against Happy and now he's training new stuff. I feel like Hawk is like so competitive usually against Happy, like he had some close games so many times. He beat him a bunch of times on net ease. He beat him on B nets when Happy had like his 99% win rate accounts. And then Hawk started playing a lot worse recently against Happy, like all of his recent series. It just feels like he's already defeated. So that's definitely been a little bit disappointing, but I guess like. It's just so hard, right? Because you play against someone, he beats you so many times. It's like the one game you're finally doing well. It still wins in the end and then you just like are kind of destroyed mentally. So it feels like maybe some players need to work on that and they're gonna have a better chance. Like on paper, it does feel like. Happy should be losing more than he does, but somehow, even when he's doing bad, he finds a way to come back in the game and still wins.
Crazy.
Yeah, the, and another thing that really, that separates really good players from maybe players who aren't as good. Is they're, they're really good at not losing. Like they might not necessarily win the game, but they're just so good at not losing. It's it's so hard to win. We actually, I know I've referenced it like three times already on this talk show, but In sup beating Foggy, like dude, watching you play against him. Like dude, watching you play against him, it just felt hard to beat him, like he's really good at not losing.
It was a real hard finish, yeah.
It's it's um, yeah, and and Happy, you know, Happy playing against undead, which is arguably one of the strongest bases to try and break. It's it's, yeah, he's a, he's gonna be a tough beat for sure.
Yeah, that game was over for a while though against Foggy, I was watching, I was like, yeah, this this night of is not winning, like he had like a bunch of archers, no moonwell, and you had heroes five-five going around
But the game still ended up going twenty-six minutes or whatever, so, you know, that's that that's my point.
Still felt like it was a foregone conclusion for some time, but yeah.
Yeah, I think he just tried to like expect me to troll a game because he never played against me, I mean, I I did play against him before, but it was like, oh, like this guy should lose to him, like he's gonna troll eventually, you know, he's like experienced, whatever. So I feel like i- if it was like Happy and his position, 120, I think he will have loved the game like ten minutes ago, but since it was someone that he He thinks he should be beating, he's like, I, since Super Bowl, he's gotta troll, like he's he's gonna be stressed, he's gonna lose to zero. No, no, it's true, that's all it is, like, right, if you're playing against someone in a ladder, then you beat twenty games in a row, and then you you're like in a losing position, you're still gonna keep playing. But if you're playing against a guy who was like, that you respect a bit more, you're just gonna leave the game maybe a little bit earlier, you know? But if it's someone that you know has the potential to throw the game, you're gonna stay a bit more into the game.
I think also, in a tournament, right, that's where you would wanna stay a little bit extra, right? This is not ladder, like, if you have even like a one percent chance to win, sometimes you should stay in the game. You never know what might happen, some epic throws have been uh have taken place. Uh so you guys think in the, like, I made you predict who would win, who would be the first one to win against Happy? We got three weekly cups now that are a sure thing. When do you think it finally happens and somebody beats Happy? Like in, in how long? Is it gonna be next month, in six months?
I think it could happen any week. I think it could happen next week, depending on how.
Thanks, Lado.
I mean, serious, I mean, serious.
You know what, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say Rising Cup is Friday, right? Or Saturday?
Saturday, yeah.
Saturday. I'll say this Rising Cup, if Foggy makes it to the finals, he he's gonna beat Happy.
Really?
Because
Next week.
Because I I tell I tell him, man, Foggy really convinced me last time that his strategy is on point. Like I said, if you watch a game, it was crazy, like I tell you, it was a little joke, like Lado pointed out earlier. Like Happy's zero live with like literally like five HP, both heroes five HP. Foggy lost his zero to HP pot when he was supposed to finish the hero kills on Happy, like I saw he got Like I think, like I really think Foggy right now, that last series giving more confidence, and he knows That he now he has a strategy that can really, really work against Happy, and I feel like your next time he's gonna play Happy the best of five. Like I'm not sure it's gonna be Saturday, like unless Happy loses, uh uh like unless Foggy loses to me again in the quarterfinals. But the the next time Foggy is gonna meet uh Happy and final, I I think he's gonna beat him. So we have a gamble, you know, I I I wouldn't bet on it, but I think I think I think next time's gonna be the right time.
Uh honestly, it could be the case, but at the same time, I don't think Happy is gonna let him uh Do so well next time, you know, because he's also really good at adapting. Maybe the first time or the first few times he sees strategies, maybe he could struggle against it, but I I believe he's gonna adapt and He he might be able to to win it pretty convincingly next uh next time. So I don't think he's gonna lose next week, but maybe like in one or two months, I could see him lose, but yeah, yeah, we'll see.
Lado?
I already said, I think he can, I think it can happen any week. It's kind of like, you know, there there's the phrase.
So you're gonna leave it, you're gonna leave us with this, okay, sure. Most useless answer ever.
I mean, you, do you know the phrase any given Sunday? It's like a football phrase, right? So basically, any given Sunday, it means on any given Sunday, any football team can win it, doesn't matter if your record is ten and O, and the other guys are O and ten. Any given Sunday, anything can happen, and I think that um while the pool of players that can beat Happy are limited. I think I think Foggy could do it any given Sunday, I think any um depending on depending on the week. I'll say, I'll give him a month, I'll say within the next month, I think Foggy will beat Happy.
How how about Happy's moderation in his channel? Do we wanna talk about?
I I got banned from Happy's channel for saying nice game Happy. I'm not even kidding.
What'd you say? What'd you say? I didn't hear, sorry.
I I got banned from Happy's channel for, like, he won a nice game, and after the game, I said, nice game Happy, and I got banned.
Oh, wow.
Do you think Happy knows who you are, Lado?
Do you know why?
I don't know, and I don't care, to be honest.
Dude, I got banned because Happy was playing against Juan, you know, like the player, and then someone in the chat asked, who was Happy playing against? I said Juan, and I got banned. I got one, no, why? Why'd you do that? I literally used to be a subscriber to Happy's chat, I used to sub to him, I used to like come to his channel. Sometimes ask questions, I was trying to get there like a year ago, like I haven't done that in a while, but like, a year ago, I used to come to his channel, it was like, hey, like, what's up, dude, he was like trying, like Like sometimes he would answer me, like asking questions, I was like, okay, like, I I feel like he was was good. And I don't know what happened, like as soon as he started winning WGL, like his ego just boom exploded, and then he started like Doing what he does, but I I don't know.
I think it's unrelated to ego, I think he just got fed up with the people trolling in his chat or whatever.
I didn't, I didn't see go, dude, I didn't see go.
I don't think it's ego. He said, he said, uh, because some someone, uh, when he was playing nettes A few weeks ago, someone asked, what are, aren't you using Warcraft III booster to see stats and who are you playing against?
Yeah.
And he said he doesn't care at all who's playing against, just wanna play his game, it doesn't matter, and that's why he doesn't want people to ask about who's playing against, because he doesn't care at all. Just wants to play his game and focus on the game, doesn't matter, you know.
Okay, yeah. You think it's because he's like, he's got like this, like, I'll just say, like, he wants to be like in his zone, and he doesn't wanna be like bothered by anything.
I think he got trolled too many times, like by people that are speaking English, you know, like, like we we all stream, so we know.
Oh, yeah.
We know like sometimes how it can get, some people, they're just trying to get on the nerve, so they're writing some BS in the chat all the time, and then after you lose, it can be pretty annoying, and then that's One day, we're just like, alright, no more, from now, no more English uh English chats, and then he even put it in his rules, actually, to be fair, like.
Yeah.
If you read, like, when you enter his channel, it says read the rules, and if you read the rules, it says no English chat, so I guess if you break that, like Even if you say nice game or he was playing one.
That's what, I'm pretty sure that's why I got banned, I got banned for saying something in English.
I mean, I said, I said one, one technically isn't an English word, but eh, eh, shit happens, man.
What about you, Sid?
I'm not banned from his channel.
Did you chat?
Oh shit.
Uh, quite a few times, but I didn't speak about opponents or stuff, you know.
The shows, the happy whisperer. I'm not banned, but I never chat in his channel, you know, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty safe, yeah. Would be funny if he watched this show and he just bans me for fun, and the next time I tune in, I'm like, you're banned, I'm like, what? I never even say anything, you know? Um, okay, so we've been talking for one hour and fifteen minutes.
I'm not ready, that went pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we wanna, do we wanna talk a little bit more? Do we wanna talk about balance or not?
About balance issue, I I'm not sure what to talk about that.
No, just balance in general.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, that'll leave us two, man, okay.
No, 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 about, like, not just one matchup, like every matchup that concerns your race, like how how happy are you with the balance?
Uh, I think, I think it's a bit tough question, I thi- I think, I think like right now, I think I think Undead is in a good place, I think Undead is a good race. I I don't think it's like the weakest race as it used to be, and people used to claim and that, I think Undead has like a lot of options now. There's like more room for like versatility and to your gameplay, and it feels like you're, it's a bit less up less as it was. Like you get the dreadlord now, you can expand, which was a big issue for Undead, I thought just the fact that you couldn't expo back then Was actually like a huge like limit in your gameplay as another player, but now that you can expand, it feels like you have like more room, like the gargs are viable now. Uh, we have like more changes, um, I don't know, man, I feel, I think that is good, I think Undead has a change with every races. I feel like some matchup against Orc, it feels like it's harder to execute versus Orc, I don't think the matchup is necessarily imbalanced, I think That others are pretty much, I think it's easier for the Orc to execute Like the the gameplay against Undead, I feel like as I'm dead, it's a little bit harder to To play like perfectly against Orc, it's kind of hard to execute, harder than like against Elf maybe. Even though, even though against Elf lately, I've been struggling a little bit against Keeper for some reason. Uh, against you meant a bit better, but like it's just me as well, I think I think against Orc, it might be ultimately like the hardest matchup, but uh, I think it's doable.
If you had to rank the races from strongest to worst.
Okay, well, 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 first of all, I actually don't think there's a weakest race, let's just get out of the way, I think there's a weakest race. I think that maybe if we were ranking the strongest race to the weakest, and you will probably not be happy with that, but I'm gonna say Human is the strongest. Then I would say that uh probably second would be uh maybe Orc or Undead, and maybe Elf is like Somewhere like equals Undead or Elf, even though Elf has been doing good lately, I think it's really hard to make a ranking. So like, don't quote me on this ranking, I think it's the weakest race at all, I think, uh, I just think that Human is the strongest, that that I know for sure. I think the three other races.
You have some shoutouts to give, because this is your last time on this show. Lado, what do you think?
Uh, so, I I agree with, I don't think there is a weakest race, I do think there are imbalances within the matchups. I think the biggest imbalance matchup right now is Elf against Human, that's coming from a bias, I understand, but um.
Okay, this is also your last time on the show.
Up against Human on on basically every map except I kind of like playing against Human on Amazonia where you can get a fast level three warden Outside outside of, or sorry, not Amazonia, um, on uh Ternistan. Um, outside of that, it just feels so hard to beat Human as Elf. It it feels like you have to gain an advantage by being aggressive, and when you're forced to be the aggressor In Warcraft III, it just never feels good, because when, in general, when you're Being the aggressor and being like the surprise aggressor can be a good thing, but when you're forced to be the aggressor in Warcraft III, and you're forced to like Run across the map and then fight at their base to try and gain some kind of economic advantage, it just doesn't It it doesn't feel good, it doesn't feel good, it feels like you're wasting time, and when you're wasting time, it just feels bad, man. So, um, and then what happened, at at least in my opinion, what happens if you don't be the aggressor? You know, Human basically has two main strategies against Elf, one is either just a one base, like a rifle, old school sky push. And then the other is expo, and then once they expo, they can kind of do whatever they want, depending on what the elf is doing. So, um, if they expo, it's one thing, I actually feel like I do better against when they expo, um, when humans do just one base rifle. It feels super duper, Human can just play very, very standard, and that that tier two timing push. You know, Elf can have three or four bears out, and the if if you didn't do some really strong damage to the human base. The the human's gonna come to you with the that, you know, maybe two footmen, four to five rifles, and then like Two priests and the militia and stuff, and even if you have three or four bears out, it just, it feels so hard to stop that push. So, um, yeah, I don't know, the the Elf against Human just feels rough when you can't get a fast three warden. Outside of that, I I I kind of like the Elf versus Undead and Elf versus Orc, I think are in good places, I think they're Close to a fifty-fifty matchup, um, I think it's slightly favored for Elf against Orc, and I think it's Maybe slightly favored for Undead against Elf, but it's it's close to, it's close enough to fifty-fifty that I don't even think it's worth mentioning.
Do you like Mirror?
Uh, Mirror's Mirror's kind of weird, Elf Mirror is super weird, there's a lot of viable strategies right now. Um, it's it's, it is kind of fun to play, but at the same time, it's it's weird to play, just because there's a lot of different things that can happen. Um, but because there's a lot of different things that can happen, it's, I think that's fine, I think it's good. It means that there isn't like any one super dominant strategy, like back in one point two eight, when it was, you know, DH Naga, you do four to five archers or three to five archers or whatever, you buy your staff, and then you go straight bears, like, and that was Elf versus Elf. Every single game for ten years, um, well, with the recent bear nerf. When I say recent, like last year, with the bear nerf, we don't see bears as much, so now we're seeing Some mass Archer things, like actually, I see Neutron in the chat, there was a, I think it was Neutron against Sonic, and we saw it was Keeper, Alchemist, Mass Archers against each other. Um, which is becoming more popular, that like a fast expand, mass archers.
They they stayed awake until the end for that, or?
But.
So how would you rank the races then?
Uh, I I don't even know, I I I honestly don't know, I I do think Elf is the weakest, but just because of the Elf versus Human matchup. I'm I'm not even kidding, it is so hard.
Raise the weakest matchup, man, typical Elf for the rest.
It is, but but I say that, I say that, and I say that with a a little bit of caution, and it's It's not bad enough that I would put it super, super low, with that, the main thing about Elf right now, and I've actually, I've said this on my stream before, but That that tier two sky rifle push is super hard to stop, and one of the main reasons is that that push was strong Back in one point two eight, or back back in one point two five, one point two two, you know, when when Sky was playing, whatever. Um, and essentially, since then, the only changes that have taken place is rifles got buffed and bears got nerfed. And the the natural counter to rifles is bears, so Basically, you know, not that much outside of those two major changes have changed in the last ten years. And that push that was super strong back then is just stronger now, so Just being forced to try and gain an advantage by doing economic damage to that human, um, it just, it I don't know, it just feels bad, so outside of Elf versus Human, I I like the matchups.
So are you gonna rank the races, or is it gonna be like any week now, somebody could be happy?
I'll say Orc, I would say, I I I like undead and human as being the top, and then Orc slightly below that. And then Elf slightly below that, but like super duper slightly, I actually think the balance is pretty good right now.
In sub space.
Okay, dude, okay, dude. I I, dude, well, dude, why do Elf player like always think to raise the weakest? I don't get it, just because you guys Can't freaking mass ants every single freaking game, says a keeper nerf, like, what, what do you get, like, like Like what about like just trying to play like a warden sometimes by a goddamn staff? And just like try to micro Euro like one, like once in a while, bring back to the base, staff back in, back into the fight, keep going. Get going, like, why not? It's so easy to do, man, like, what about going to a tree of eternity sometimes, just don't sit here, like, I don't know, man. I don't know why Elf always think to raise the weakest, it tells me, it tells me, yeah, like, like, like Elf was good, man, Elf was a good race.
I'm not saying Elf isn't good, I'm not saying Elf isn't good, and when I say it's slight.
Well, you are, though.
It is just that one, it is just the one matchup, like Elf against Human is bad, it's not good. Um, but the what what you're talking about with the staffs, that If we're getting really deep into it, those staffs are expensive, they really are, so when, if we're talking about like that timing push with the rifles, and you're talking about buying Staff of teleportation, staff of preservation, and then you have your shop on top of that, you're talking about, you know, hundred fifty, hundred fifty Hundred thirty gold, that's basically, that's like almost two bears worth of units. And whenever I'm talking about stopping that push, generally, you'll have three to four bears out, so if you, and if you use your gold to buy those staffs. You're basically gonna have one to two bears out to try and stop that push, and you're gonna have staffs to to staff yourself, what, back into a base that That's already being pushed by six rifles, so it doesn't, I it with that matchup, that ideology just doesn't work. I I know, I understand there's a lot of intricacies, but so, but but what I'm talking about that I feel is The most broken right now, that whole staff thing, which I agree, staff play is very, very strong, it just doesn't work when you're talking about trying to stop that That rifle push.
Alright, Sides.
Okay, uh, yeah, the balance has been, I think, pretty tough to, I mean, it's been changing quite a lot. I mean, if I compare, of course, it was like ten years ago, undead versus Orc was unplayable, I feel. Uh, but I think it's also, while Insub said, the patch changes, like being able to expand, and also The maps, I I think they play a big part into matchups and balance in general. Um, I would say probably undead for me is the strongest race right now. Even though it's not really, like, I would say undead and human are pretty close to be the strongest race. And Night Elf and Orc are probably the two weakest race, but uh pretty even. Like when I watch Night Elf versus Orc, it feels pretty tough for the Orc, when I watch Human versus Undead, it feels pretty hard for Human. And when I watch Human versus Night Elf, it feels pretty hard for for Night Elf, so I think it evens out in general. It's not really, there's, there's a bit of imbalance in some matchups, but overall, it's not too bad, I Probably think the balance has never been, has never been as good, as good as it is right now, yeah.
Yeah, it looks pretty nice right now.
Yeah.
Would you guys, sorry, go ahead.
No, go, go.
Uh, would you guys like to see some patches soon, or you're happy with the game staying the way it is, like, would you like Blizzard to do some dynamic patching, or like the game Is changing a little bit here and there, like every, you know, half year at least, or?
I'm not sure, man, it it feels like the game right now is really nice, and it feels like Blizzard has got, has like Made some big mistakes in the past with their aggressive patching, with like changing a lot of stuff. So I feel like, yes, I do want a patch, because I love the game changing, I love the game evolving, and we we come up with new strategies every time. So, yes, that wasn't changes, but like, maybe small changes, because I feel like last time we had big changes with Elf. Like it was, it was, it was a shitshow, let's be honest, like, I stopped, I literally stopped playing Warcraft when I keep it over buffed. With archers, archers, it feels like the game was really not fun, so I think, I I just hope that next time Blizzard patches, I hope they get more information and try to get like Try to maybe know a bit about more about the game, and maybe ask more players about what they think about that, so.
Who should they ask then?
I think you should ask like the top Asian player, I think you should ask like, every race is like, maybe like the one twenty, the the lens, and of course, you could ask some You could also ask like Happy, Foggy, like, like the guys who really know, I don't think they should necessarily ask like Casters or like uh other guys, like streamers. Casters or like uh other guys like streamers or whatever. Like like I'm not gonna say any name, but I I I don't really think that these guys are like in the coming of scene and I feel like some of them are maybe more biased. So I feel like if we ask like all the pros together, maybe like we can like all combine it information and try to find a middle between everything. Uh I think I feel like everybody's gonna be a little bit biased in their in their talks anyway, like everybody's gonna say like. Yeah, you know, I'm a human player, I think you should really nerf human, because these guys literally make a a living with playing human lane winning tournaments, so they're not gonna say like, eh, I want you to relate for my race. And then you 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 know what I mean, so I think I think it's kind of hard to. To really know and I think if Blizzard like knew a bit a bit about Warcraft, I think that would be already better, but they've been gone for so long that. They don't have the choice now to just ask people because they don't know anything about about the game itself, because it. Like just came back to the game like two years ago, so yeah, but yeah, I I I do want patches, but I'm a little bit skeptic, skeptical.
What about you guys?
Ah yeah, yeah, you go ahead, Lado. You you go ahead.
Okay, so uh yes, I agree, small patches, the main thing, I think bears were over nerfed. I I love playing with bears and now it's just the the amount of damage that was taken, I I know, maybe I'm harping too much on. On night elf right now, but the they took away four damage on bears plus you you tag roar onto that. Which normally you have roar active if you're if you're playing bears, that's five damage, five damage per bear that you produce was basically taken away. Which if you think about it, when you go to the shop, a clause of attack plus six costs a hundred and twenty five gold, so you can equate if six damage is. A hundred and twenty five gold, taking away five damage per bear is like a hundred gold per bear on a unit that already costs, you know, two hundred and fifty gold. It's just that the the nerf that they gave to bears, it's just it really, really. Hurt elf and it's it's one of the reasons why we're seeing so much more tier one elf play. It's it's the it's the reason Foggy is going mass archers against undead now, it's the reason we see mass tier one against orc. Um and it's the reason that elf is having so much trouble against human, so I would like to see at at least give. Two of that four damage back, I would love to, I would love to see two of that four damage back, but even do it in small patches, give give one damage back to the bear. And see how it goes, um but do something similarly across the board for all of the races and just making sure that those patches do come in like. Very small increments, because I also agree with inside a hundred percent that the the overbuff the keeper was, it was a shitshow. It was a complete shitshow, keep you saw keeper one hundred percent of the matches and the win rate for keeper was off the charts.
In mirror as well.
Yeah, oh yeah, all the time, you you just went there, or sorry, you just went keeper all the time, it was because any other. You know, you're talking about, we talked about doing the optimal play, the optimal play one hundred percent of the time was going keeper, so. Yeah, that was that was a big overbuff, so I think as long as Blizzard listens to the top. You know, the listens to the community well enough and very small changes, I think it'll be good.
Yeah, it's it's hard to listen to pro players because they obviously are gonna be a bit biased, right? They want their race to be better and they want to be successful at the game, so they're not gonna say, yeah, nerf dreadlord, nerf death knight, they're just too good. As an undead player, right, so not sure.
So do you think you should ask instead like, like obviously they do need like someone to demo to do, like do you think they should like ask? The pros, you should ask like the Reddit, like you should ask like what? I know who you refer to.
Why not casters, why not casters, you know, they they cast a lot of games of different races, we can get a team tank.
Well, here's the thing, I think, I think casters like definitely see a lot of the games, so maybe like you can add some information, I ju- I just don't think that like. I really feel like you have to ultimately maybe like like play the game to understand how it goes and how it feels, but like always like us like watching, maybe like. Like because you're watching, like it doesn't mean that you understand really everything, so I think like a little bit of everyone would be the best, even though I feel like pro players ultimately would be the best. References will come to balance, I don't think uh they should necessarily ask like uh streamers who or like casters or whatever. I think a little bit of everything is a bit good, I think pro players ultimately like they play the game like twelve hours a day, they really know what's good, what's bad. And what needs to be changed and what's annoying, what's good, so I think I think for players ultimately is the the best.
How about Twitch shots, they always tell me why I lost again after I lost it.
I I mean, I mean Twitch shot will be probably the best, it's you're never wrong, man, you're never wrong, yeah.
Uh actually.
Always right, man.
There is a cup we didn't talk about, which happened around two weeks ago, that's the Chinese Junior Cup. Which Moon actually won, by the way.
Oh, elf player, look at this Lado, an elf player, won the tournament. That's crazy, huh?
It's really weird, especially with bears getting a nerf and night elf.
Yeah, exactly.
Moon bopped Chemico in the grand finals, three and one. I guess Chemico must not know about the rifles, Lado, maybe you should get in touch, coach him a little bit. Did you guys catch any of these games or obviously not?
Plead the fifth, get it, moon fifth race and pleading the fifth. Plead the fifth, or is that just the US thing?
No, we know what that means, yeah. But yeah, moon won in finals versus Chemico, there was a quite a few upsets here, I think, like. Uh Chemico beating Infi, like I don't think too many people would have been on that necessarily and then Chemico like he was, he went on an insane run, he beat one twenty in the semi. Uh I guess one twenty beating focus, you know, that can happen.
Yeah, it does happen, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like a big surprise.
Kind of sad that Lolite and Moon met in the quarter, I guess, like it's, you get a mirror down there.
Mm hmm.
But yeah, like night elf, you know, still winning some tournaments here and there, right, Lado?
Dude, dude, Chemico is honestly like one of my favorite players to watch, like can we just talk about it for a second, like this guy's micro. Like it feels like even players are not really recognized much for the micro, they're much like more known for like just like decision making and macro. But it feels like Chemico, when you watch him, it feels like he's like, like it's blocks and it surrounds and and just like the way he fights is impressive, he gets kills. Where like like your average human would never get, you know, like you just block something for ten seconds.
Yeah.
And normally like any other human, like even Enfield would never get that kill right there, but the fact he's able to like. Lucky like blocking it for like ten seconds to get us around with four or five units, he gets kills where normally like you wouldn't get kills. So I think that's really impressive and I think that really makes him like such a good player, he's really one of my friends to watch.
This was a weird tournament in general, I remember watching group A and B and then in group A, TH and Romantic went out of the group. And so in advance, I was like, what is going on here, like?
Yeah.
Humans getting dubbed turn left and right, then group B comes, SOC takes last place, I'm like, okay, all all is well in the world. And then suddenly, you go into group C, Infi gets out, you go into group D, Chemico gets out, beating Remind, then one twenty and then makes it all the way to the finals, it's like. Okay, like, I guess lots of upsets are still happening, so even though we got like an established. Uh scene at the top, you know, SDR players and all that, it still feels like. For example, some of these Korean humans, they're still rising, they're still getting better and like some of them, you know, they've even beaten the. The top names in terms of human players, you know, Infi and TH and mirror sometimes. Uh Romantic is still getting better, it's like, we're still at a point where like, you know, somebody like Soin as well, like very strong showing in this tournament, so. It still feels like up in the air, if you work hard, it still feels like you can make it at the top and uh challenge these guys, right?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, definitely, I think uh. Like soon, of course, like like you say, it's like a new player, but soon has been there for a while, Chemico as well, I think they've always been good, of course, SOC got better too. Yeah, I think uh Enfield and TH are not like invincible, like even happier, like the. Like the elite, they like to call them, like the lens, TH, Enfield, it feels like they're all a class of their own moon. Yeah, yeah, definitely, just like really, like we have kids like uh fifteen swear. By the way, his name was like fourteen sway, changes like fifteen sway, I think, anyway, uh we we have guys like this who like. Pretty much uh pick up the game, I think uh everyone good chances to like beat them in the future, like like the big guys and uh. Yeah, I think it is, it's absolutely possible, like it's not always like the big ones.
I I think everyone that plays this game at a competitive level, everyone strives to play the perfect game, but it's impossible to do it and it's, you know, you can look at. Any game at any level and everyone makes mistakes, every at every single level, it might be a very, very small mistake, but it's it's a mistake nonetheless. And um those mistakes are what allow these upsets to happen and that's what makes the scene fun to watch, if there weren't upsets, it wouldn't be fun.
So can I get some, like we kind of know who who's gonna go to Anaheim, right, it's gonna be uh. The four invited players that we mentioned earlier, Lin, Romantic, TH, Happy, there's gonna be most of the very good NA players. How many NA players do you guys think are gonna be in the top four?
A top four, oh my god, I think you, I I think it's really like grid dependent, I I like 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 I'm not sure if they're going to look at the grid and be like. Okay, we have Lynn, like we're going to put him against like one of the worst player of the tournament, so like I I think it really depends, like maybe if we have like, I don't like a. I I wish like um happy versus slam in the first round, you know, I think it could give like a good chance for a player like a hitman to make it, for example.
Yeah.
And like top four, like I I don't think there's many chances, but I think I got like Hitman could have a really good chance if we're talking NA. Osi's gonna be there, like, I like OC, did, Osi's my guy, dude, Osi's my guy, but he's going out round two, dude.
You think Osi's not gonna go far?
He he's not touching a single penny, dude, I tell you that. No, seriously, I think I think it really depends on like how the grid's gonna be, so uh I think I like unless like some crazy stuff happen like a. Happy against Slim first round and then uh against one twenty, which I don't think is gonna happen, like you never know sometimes to be uh. Like something crazy could happen, maybe you feel like uh maybe like Hitman versus the light in first round, if he's going, of course. But we said like Lynn was invited, but like, isn't like the entire like newbie crew going, like Lynn? One twenty, I think, I think like these guys are going for sure, like they have chances of qualifying, they're on the same team.
There hasn't been too much info uh going out, but there's definitely a lot of rumors that Chinese players might not go because of the coronavirus stuff.
Yeah.
So we don't really know, I guess we can just wait and see, you know, it's like, it's pretty crazy this thing. Even in UFC, in UFC right now, there is a fighter that's supposed to fight soon, like she's the champion. In uh flyweight, oh no, in uh, I don't know, in the lowest weight class, I think, uh like the the lightest one and uh. She's having a very hard time getting the visa and going to USA to actually compete to defend her belt, so it's pretty crazy, like the travel outside of China is like. Really, really complicated, so we'll see, I I hope they go, I think it'd be amazing to have to have romantic and TH at least, if there is more, it's even better, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be amazing, but I think it would be nice to have like some maybe like a new player, maybe like a weaker European player who's never had the chance to touch a big amount of money to actually. Get a chance in his life to get like top two, top four and make like two thousand dollars, I think it's a thousand, I'm not too sure about the. The polls, like at this makes maybe like a small like amount of money, at least have the experience of like feeling like a pro. At least maybe once in his life and like travel for tournament, win something and feel like the the feeling of accomplishment, I think that would be nice. So uh of course it would be great to have these games, like have the big names, but I think I I think it would be cool to see some new names make it top four and. Like they didn't, you're pretty much not used to see, just just try and make it and maybe uh yeah, I think it would be nice, I have an opinion.
By the way, thirteens to sixteens is five hundred dollar, that's not bad, quite a few people, sixteen people getting paid.
That's really not bad.
Yeah, that's really good.
Lado is like, I'm going.
Yeah, I might be able to place top sixteen, who knows?
Those five Benjamins, they got my name on them.
I don't know, Divine is going, man, he might be going top four.
Divine.
Top four?
Divine, the guy who gave you like tips in the chat yesterday, Todd.
Do do you know like uh how much of the NA scene is going, like of all the best NA players and stuff?
Is Cruncher going, do we know?
Nah, Cruncher's not going.
So it's it's basically Hitman, I mean, Hitman is probably the gonna be the best American player there.
If we take a look at the top ten NA player, if we can like make it quick top ten, I think like Hitman's going, Osi's going. Uh apart from that, there's like this guy called Arc RS, he makes uh pretty much great content on Twitch, like he makes so many men and stuff, he's a good player too. Like it's not like a like a huge competitor for like top top eight, I would say, but I apart from that, no, like others are going, I'm not going. Danger, HTRT, uh yeah, other guys too.
How come? Like all these guys are not going?
I'm not sure, man, like it's pretty expensive to travel to California, dude, from Canada, man, it's a big trip, California is this expensive place to be, like you have to be guaranteed to make money at least. I guess it's a it's a great trip, but like, you know, like um.
Who's the passion, there is an NA tournament and NA players?
It's a passion, like the trip, like someone told me, like he's from Canada, he's going, it's like a one point like four K like travel just to go there.
Yeah.
Like the hotels and the trip, like you're gonna go there, you're gonna have a few drinks, you're gonna have some some McDonald with OC, like uh. You gotta just some, like like you're gonna spend money on food as well, you know, so so like, of course, like it's gonna be expensive, so I'm not sure like. Something that people really wanted to.
Yeah, I got a, I got an information from Neo, he told me uh USA has a travel ban for Chinese residents. So TH, Romantic and Lynn cannot go, apparently.
Oh, Neo with the enzyme, nice.
Well, that's three more spots for Americans, then.
Lado right now is opening kayak, he's checking flights.
Damn.
Two K, here I come, even with my weak bears.
Dude, Linda going is actually pretty big.
Yeah, because he lives in China, that sucks for them though.
Yeah, this is really sad, actually, I and I guess like they have to hand out new invites, I'm pretty sure the invites were getting their flights, right? And stuff covered, so it's like, it's like really sick value, like if somebody gets invited, you basically like, you shouldn't say no, right, like. So it's gonna be interesting to see who they ask, like, we kind of hope to hear something soon, so we know like what's going on, but yeah. Obviously, very sad, I guess the safe bet would be to ask Korean players, maybe some European as well.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, like to see like Chemico going.
Yeah, yeah, like SOC possibly, like Lolite was invited, yeah.
Where is Moon, is invited?
Doesn't Moon live in China as well, like we don't really know, right?
Uh I think I think he does, but like, like let's say like Moon wants to go, like can he not travel to like South Korea and just go from South Korea to like USA? Like I I I mean, it would be pretty easy for him, like Moon is like almost guaranteed to be like top three, especially if Flynn's not going and like the other Chinese aren't going. Moon's the guaranteed top two, top three, like he's gonna have to deal with like who like happy, like who else, he's gonna deal with like the Europeans, which. On on paper, he has a higher chance to be, right?
And we don't really know yet.
If there's any Europeans.
Yeah, we don't really know yet who from Europe is going, right, like I think there is a few people that might go, but it's like. There hasn't been a list made public, hopefully that's done soon, so then maybe next week we can talk about it or something, but.
I mean, Ente said he was probably going, Ente won, but I'm I'm not sure if they're going, I got like, like I don't wanna say anything, but like, eh, like like Ente has been literally. Like talking about it a lot for the past few weeks.
Yeah, I think if I was, if I was Foggy, I'd wanna go, like he would have a pretty good chance to go deep and like win some real money.
Yeah, but like Foggy has no teams right now, he's got no sponsors to to sponsor his flight to go to, yes, so he's pretty much by his own. Like, you know, like I'm, like I'm not sure how healthy he is, but like I I think it's harder. When you have no teams and no sponsor, which I think is so foggy's case right now, if you're in the team, that would be like a no brain just saying foggy, but. By himself, like Hawk as well, he doesn't have a team either, so like.
Yeah.
It's like happy who gets his trip sponsored right away by Team Love.
I mean, they could ask the streams, like happy did for WGL, even though he was paid to go.
Oh yeah, I'm sure he would get uh, he would get the funds to, if they wanted, yeah.
Yeah, that would be pretty crazy, like if happy goes and then like all of these very strong, you know, Chinese and Lin, they don't go, like it's like.
Yeah.
He's just like, ka-ching. It just sees like a dollar sign in his eyes immediately, like the competition would be way easier for him for sure.
Definitely.
How good is Hitman against undead actually, like how, if he works very hard against undead, what would you say, he would have like some real chances to maybe beat happy?
I I don't think he would be able to beat happy in LAN.
Really?
Uh yeah, because yeah, it's tough, uh he has less experience also, I feel in LAN. So you know, he plays a lot on Nedis, I mean, he used to because nowadays he's not as active anymore for the past few weeks. So he plays a lot from home, but playing in a tournament, it's it's always different and happy. He has been to a few lands now, I think he's getting used to it compared to Hitman, so that would probably affect the result as well.
Uh I wouldn't say he has like zero chance, I think uh against one. Against one twenty and the WGL, he did a pretty good showing, it was like his first, like like it was like his first Warcraft land tournament. Of course, he had experience with Starcraft two before, but like it was not never like a big player who traveled a lot, I think if you look at his game against one twenty at the WGL, he definitely showed. That he he can't deal with the the best sunsets in the world, like of course, I wouldn't I wouldn't bet that he was gonna be happy. But I think I I think uh he's like, in my opinion, probably the best orbish undead in the western scene right now. I I don't think there's any orc against undead around stronger than them, in my opinion at least, maybe you can argue like uh Spiral. I just thought it was really, really good as well, I I was like it meant Spiral like the best western, I guess, I wouldn't say like one is better than the other. But uh yeah, I think I think uh. Yeah, maybe we'll have a chance, but I wouldn't bet on the, yeah, because of land and and stuff.
Happy seems just really going line as well, so.
I think Hitman has a, I think he has a chance, but I would put it at like maybe ten or fifteen percent chance of beating happy. Uh he thinks he he's confident in his undead matchup, he's very confident in his undead matchup, he's he's a confident player as a whole. But his undead is his best matchup too, um but that being said, the experience goes the way of happy, the. You know, overall skill level goes the way of happy, so yeah, chance of him actually beating happy on LAN, I would put it somewhere probably fifteen percent.
Are you guys surprised that there is not more enthusiasm from like in particular the NA scene to try and go to this event or because? Like there hasn't been a tournament in NA like forever for Warcraft, some people, they still play like very actively, they play a lot and stuff and then now it's like there is finally one and like, you know. I don't know what's going on in their life, you know, and I'm not, you know, saying anything bad about them, but like. You just say like, for example, Cruncher, HRT and stuff, they are not gonna go. I I feel like that surprises me a little bit, you know, like when I organize our own couch in Germany, uh. A lot, like we had thirty two players for an offline event, which was organized, you know, not necessarily that long in advance. And it felt, it felt like they could have been way more as well, like I didn't necessarily advertise it so well to the Russian, because I thought it was super expensive for them to go. And then later on, I learned that the flight wasn't that expensive, sadly, the Swedish players couldn't make it either, like, you know. It's kind of, I guess it's kind of hard for them to get out of work and everything. Sadly, the Swedish players couldn't make it either, like, you know, it's kinda, I guess it's kinda hard for them to get out of work and everything.
Yeah.
But I would have expected a lot of the NA scene to go, like my experience with having a tournament in North America that was open was CPL 2005. And there was like 40 American players or something, it was insane, 40 American players, three Europeans, top three. Three Europeans. So you know, I was just kinda thinking about Anaheim, I'm like, oh my god, what if it's the same and stuff, but yeah, I'm definitely surprised, like what about you guys, do you think it's like normal, like the fact that it's expensive, sure. That's a problem, but if you have passion for the game and stuff, it does feel like, you know, going to it could be like a great experience too.
Yeah, a lot of these guys, unless you're guaranteed money, I mean, uh these guys that you're talking about, they work jobs, you know.
Yeah.
Um it's 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 hard to justify, you know, 500 to a thousand dollars, more likely a thousand dollars to may or may not finish in the top, you know, top six or whatever the prize pool was to actually make your money back. Let alone, you know, either make extra money or take a loss. Um now, you're you're also paying for the experience, which is which is nice, but the the fact that the tournament could end up getting, you know, they might end up inviting Moon and you know, it it could just get bogged down by a bunch of Korean and Chinese at the last minute. And they'll just take the top eight slots and all the Americans will be SOL, so. Yeah, I think that that, at least in my opinion, I think that's the attitude that the Americans have, and none of the Americans really play the game professionally, you know, you you might call them pro level players and they might make some money here and there, like doing cups and whatnot. But they're not, you know, they don't play this game for their for a living, you know, they're either students or they work full-time jobs, so this is basically a glorified hobby for the large majority of Americans.
Yeah, but they're competitive, but I guess, yeah, like if I try to compare it to Iron Couch. A lot of players came like from France or Germany and it was just like a day tournament, you know, you can leave the next day, so you don't have to worry about like having three or four days of hotel. Which in Anaheim isn't cheap. I was actually surprised, like I didn't even know there was a Dream Act in Anaheim initially, I was like, wow, this is definitely not not gonna be one of the cheaper ones to attend, like, you know, usually they have, I mean, they have so many Dream Acts by now, you know, they have like Montreal, Dallas, like Austin. And stuff, but I guess that has to be one of the more expensive to attend.
The the other difference between that too is like, the the USA is massive, like I know Cruncher lives in like the Midwest and I don't know, OC lives east-ish coast, I think, I know Hitman kinda lives over towards California, but in terms of travel. You basically can't get anywhere, you can't get to Anaheim unless unless you fly there. Whereas, you know, Germany to France, you might be able to either drive or hop on a train or something like that. That would be like if if there was a tournament in Pittsburgh, like in Pennsylvania, that's a three hours drive away, I'd be there in a heartbeat, I'd be there in a second, but the fact that it's, you know, a 400 or 500 dollar flight away plus the hotels.
Really, that much? Have you looked at flights?
Yeah, yeah, that's it's about the to go across.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
Bido is going and he's from Canada and he he was telling me like how much expensive it was, like OC as well, like getting an hotel, the flight.
Yeah, but like it feels like uh is there, you do you think there's enough communications among amongst players that might, you know, maybe share a room or something to save costs?
Yeah, yeah, I just thought there was a chat uh like saying that, yeah, like you could share a room and stuff, I think, yeah, I mean, it could be a good idea, yeah, I think, I think if it was a bit more organized. You could definitely save a few penny here and there and try to to make it like more affordable, for sure, yeah. I'm not sure what's going on with the NA scene, man, it feels like maybe we don't have like, it it just feels like our scene a little bit is has been dead for so long, it feels like
Yeah.
We don't have like as much like ambition when we start a tournament and the first thing we think about is, oh my god, this is a tournament, we're gonna go. I feel like, I don't know, I I don't know, man, it's hard to explain really. I feel like I I feel like if I speak for myself, we 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 would be more like, if I go there like I would only go there if I was really guaranteed to make like a decent amount of money.
Well, you're never really guaranteed to make a decent amount of money, you never know what might happen, you know, like you get a tough draw, you choke one series, like and that's it.
Yeah, for sure, but like let's say I had like a really great experience and I knew that the the last 10 tournaments I made money. Like maybe like I would know that like if I see this guy, this guy, this guy, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna beat him like 90% of the time, you know what I mean, like it's just like a confidence thing. Like M M I K is like, I don't really feel like spending like a thousand dollar going there. And yes, like I probably have like one of the best trips of my life, I'll meet like some market flyers and have a good time, you know, but I I feel like I would come back home and I'd be like, yeah, like that was cool, but like I'm not sure, maybe, I don't know, it's it feels, I don't know, it feels like we have less passion maybe than the Europeans, I feel, like you guys have like much better scene and like there's more stuff happening and more organization, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it definitely felt like that at Iron Couch, like there were so many people that came that didn't, you know, they weren't even thinking about the money, right, the price pool wasn't very big. They knew they were never gonna make money, they just wanted to go for the experience, but yeah, obviously, like I said, it was a one-day event, it was way shorter, even though like for those that stayed there until the end, they probably either had to spend the night or drive like late at nights or something, but yeah, I guess the infrastructure or like just the way uh you have to travel and stuff really far, does not make it easy, but I definitely feel like there could have been more effort for sure, cuz I feel like a lot of people, they would wanna attend. But they ruled it out pretty quickly, like somebody just said in the chat, if it was four months notice, you see a lot of players there, including myself. Like how how long was the notice? It definitely felt like there was a decent notice.
It was like two two months or two and a half months or something.
Yeah, that's like very decent, in my opinion, like to start planning and stuff, like talk to somebody. Just room with someone, like I know some people can be annoying sometimes, but it's gonna save you
Yeah, I know.
A lot of money for sure, like if you're room with someone. And there are some hotels there that like will be a little cheaper than like, you know, you don't have to stay at the Marriott or the Hilton, right, like you go to Anaheim, you can stay there. Dude, like I went to, what was it, I went to MLG Anaheim like 2011 or something, and I stayed at like the some hotel like way of like Spring Hill Suites or another one, which actually like is still very decent, but uh Best Western, yeah, I stayed at the Best Western dude, it's like, it's only on two floors. And if somebody drives and parks their car at night, you it wakes it wakes you up for sure, like it makes so much noise, so I stayed there like when I went to MLG in 2011, like you can save money, I guess, like just doing that for sure and rooming with someone in my opinion.
I said that to OC, he's like, oh god, it's so expensive, I said, dude, like just share a room, there's like so many people that are going there, you know, he's like, I'm not gay.
I saw OC talk about it and say, I I don't want your farts in my room, something like that.
That's that's literally what he said, like the other guys as well, like if I talk to Cruncher, it's like 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 where are they going is like like dude, like I'm like studying at the university, I'm almost done with my stuff, so like he doesn't wanna feel like leaving his job, he's like a student, like he probably doesn't have like much money or something, and then he doesn't feel like taking like a a weekend of work and then just go there and like, I think Cruncher would have a really good chance to get top sixteen, but I think he doesn't have any motivation.
Yeah.
To like just prepare everything, like he's like his studies on his like, you know, like studies can be pretty uh overwhelming, you know, so I think he he his ad is not in Warcraft, uh like right now.
I feel like uh the mentality in North America is almost different, it like it feels like it would be harder for somebody there to be a pro. Like even the pro players from North America, it feels like they had a harder time getting acceptance for their parents than people would in Europe. I think in Europe, maybe parents and like the older generation, they are a little bit more open-minded to see their their kid or yeah, their child just like become a professional gamer of some sort, like what do you guys think about that? In my experience, that's what I've seen.
I mean, in in America as a whole, I think gaming is seen as a hobby, it's not, uh the whole pro scene hasn't blown up that much yet. It more recently, it has been better. Um it like League of Legends is helping that a lot, there's a lot of hype around like the League of Legends World Finals and stuff like that, but even at my school, the athletic director in our school district, I talked to him about starting an esports program at in in our school district, and he's open to the idea, but it's it's kind of a new thing. Uh the Ohio State University, which is in Columbus where I live, it's one of the biggest universities in the country. They just started an esports program like last year, so it's still it's it's still definitely a new thing and it's not really a widely accepted idea, and I think that coupled with the fact that a lot of the people that play these games at a quote-unquote professional level are either in college studying something to be a professional at something, or have already finished college and are doing something in a professional scene or pursuing a career, you know, they're not gonna turn their backs on a a hundred thousand dollar bachelor's degree, so that they can maybe go and make a couple thousand dollars playing a professional game, so um at least that that's that that's that's my opinion, and I think that's the way that most most Americans view it.
I think uh in the last year, it's grown, it actually grown a lot with Fortnite, you know, like having this million dollar tournament.
Yeah.
It's not like this this 16-year-old guy like called Booga, he won the tournament, and I think he opened a lot of minds to be to parents to be like, yeah, like I think my kid can really make good money with doing video gaming, like make like a a career out of it. I think, yeah, I think it's definitely growing a lot, especially in the last years with like these big tournaments. And now you have like Fortnite in schools, you have like these coaches and all that, so I think uh I think America is actually doing pretty like like better than people think, uh actually, they definitely grow a lot. I think people are gonna be more open-minded now about letting their kid play uh a few hours more on a PC than uh they used to, and by the way, like like parents, like like watching TV or playing games, it's sort of like the same thing, so I'm sure like some, like people will say like, yeah, like he's watching TV or playing games, like it's the same thing, so I think uh parents should be really try to understand this a little bit more, you know, but like if you're watching TV or playing games, the same thing, so maybe let him play a bit more games and uh acknowledge that it's sort of the same thing than watching his favorite show on on Netflix.
Side, any thoughts?
Uh I'm not really sure about the situation in America, uh but in Europe, I feel like it's still a stereotype to play uh video games when you play. I mean, it I it's I it's hard to define what's too much, too many hours spent spent playing video games, but I feel like parents are still not really comfortable with their kids uh spending too many hours behind a screen playing video games, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough to say. But uh for Warcraft three though, most of the community or most of the players right now, I feel like they're pretty old, right? I mean, relatively old compared to other games, so most of us are 20 plus or even 30, like me. So I mean, we we make our own own decisions, of course, we have like uh responsibilities as well, so it's not always easy to leave work or families to go to a tournament. So we have to consider that part, that's maybe why there's not as many players as we expected, because yeah, they just cannot go for many different reasons.
Yeah. Okay, I think we can take a few questions from the chat maybe.
Sure.
And then we'll give shoutouts and uh call it for now, we've been talking for two hours, not bad for the first episode.
Not bad, not bad, not bad.
Good good discussion?
This has been fun, this has been good.
So if you guys have questions in the chat, uh send them our way and then we'll see uh which are the interesting ones that we can answer.
Nice mug, nice mug side.
Thank you, thank you.
Hopefully you guys will have watched from the start and you don't ask about something we already talked about. And yeah. Fredo Kun asked, Todd, will the guests be regulars or will you rotate guests in? Uh yeah, I mean, I'm open to anything, I'm open to suggestions, like I I mean, I don't, I haven't asked Side Lado and Insuk to be on every show, so I'm guessing we can still rotate.
I would like to be a regular.
By the way, boys, uh don't plan anything every Wednesday for the rest of the year. Yeah, no, we can rotate, but uh I would love to have these guys back as well, I think it's been a very good discussion for sure as well.
I'd be glad to be a regular manager, so maybe not every week, but I'd I'd like to be uh there pretty often, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fun, I like it.
It's cool.
I think it's gonna be fun, and uh actually like four now. We were four, but I would love to do uh if we could like get a few more people as well, I think, like obviously not too many, but I think if we go up to five or six, I think that'd be pretty cool as well. Um will it be possible to get someone from Blizzard to join the next town hall meeting? I could actually reach out, I guess, like
That'd be crazy. That'd be insane, nah. In a good way, in a good way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, they I don't think they personally would want to, but
Yeah.
Maybe.
I think we have to be really careful with what we're talking about, like don't wanna make it awkward either with like asking questions that they cannot answer or something. Yeah.
Especially the 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 part of our balance, we're all like, so where's the buff, dude, like?
Yeah, 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 Todd would be like, what the fuck's happening with human against undead?
And then Lado is like, but the bears have been nerfed and the rifles have been buffed, I'm like, shut up, like we're talking about human against undead, don't interrupt me, I'll kick you out of the call. Um let's see, if you guys see any interesting question.
This one is super specific, it says, uh Lotto, do you agree bears, dots and MGs could be reworked in terms of cost damage and overall fun to play, MGs most likely.
The answer is yes, okay, that's my next question.
Yeah, the answer is yes, I do you want me to answer it or no?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, the answer is yes, bears should get their two damage buff or just the cost. Dots got their cost increased because they were being played against Orc every single time, but with the tier one coming in, I could see dots being reworked either in terms of like the mana cost of Cyclone and the actual cost of the dot or something like that. Um the MG change, the 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 big MG change was basically the double taunt. The I think it was a good change, we see MGs now, we still don't see them all the time, but we do see them from time to time, which I think is it puts them in a good spot, um but they still don't do damage, so I would like to see if if they do change MGs, I would like to see uh maybe like reduce their HP but increase their damage or something like that, but um yeah, I would, I mean, I rework, yeah, it's always viable.
Yeah, we have Fatu Luda Chow said, do you think there's gonna be some 17, 18-year-old that goes out of nowhere and take over the Warcraft scene? I think it's already a bit happening, I think it's gonna be like a bunch of them, but like in the Asian scene, we have guys like Ice Orc, who was a 20 years old, who was actually even named for himself like a few years ago. We have a 15, 12, like 15-year-old who uh is doing pretty pretty decent, actually gets better every year. Uh we, I actually earlier I was watching back to Warcraft and I saw this guy called Vampire with a Ukraine undead. The the guy's literally 14 years old and he was playing against Nertron and uh
Yeah.
And Nertron like literally could be his dad, is like twice as older as him.
Probably is.
I was I was watching this guy, I was like, like this guy's actually good, good micro, like his micro seems good, of course, he has not much experience. And you could tell that he was definitely not not the same level as the guy as Nertron.
Yeah.
But uh I I think it was cool, man, like we we still see some older kids, I uh sent you some other guys too, but I forgot the name, but uh I think in the Asian scene, we already have this. And I think uh if the game continues to like to grow a bit, I think we're gonna have the, we're gonna have more young youngsters trying to pop. I I I'm not expecting like a lot of young kids coming and do damage, but I think uh I think it's definitely possible, it's already happening, so why not, uh what are the more in the future?
That friendly dev has, do you think it's worth going pro in Warcraft three if you are in your early mid twenties, Todd? Um how passionate are you about the game? Like and you need to, you need to truly understand what it means to go pro in Warcraft three, you know, you're probably never gonna make the big bucks unless you can somehow become the best world player that's beats Happy every weekend in the online cups and then goes to the big tournaments and wins those as well, so if you're truly passionate about about it, I would recommend for you to do anything that you enjoy doing and like try to pursue it as a career, but obviously, you need to, in my opinion, understand what that means, you know, for you and how you're gonna be doing financially, you know, you're not gonna be rolling in it, I can I can tell you that, it's gonna be pretty pretty hard, then again it's probably the best timing right now with uh the ESL Pro Tour and everything, there is definitely a lot of opportunities out there. There is streaming on the side that you can do, if you if you do it very smart and you can combine all of those things, then you can definitely make a living and also enjoy it, but if you play human, I would say though, probably not.
And seriously, and seriously, Chow actually has a decent question, he says, what do you think we can do as players who love the game to help the scene in light of of all the aid for Blizzard and Reforged? I think one of the best way to like fight that would be to buy a ticket to Dream Act, like whatever Dream Act is gonna have next to you is gonna have Warcraft. I think just just buy a ticket, go there, like just show up, try to support like like uh
Yeah.
The like like the same uh materially, try to maybe stream and I I I I don't know, I think just going there would be a good like supporting tournaments and just showing up and showing love for the for the game and I think that would be a a great way to do it.
Um I I was gonna read that question too, cuz I actually have a different answer, but one I think the answer to that question, especially Inson, you have a unique perspective as being a streamer too, is just fostering a a supportive community rather than a toxic community, I think is super duper important. It's one of the reasons that I I wanted to come on this town hall, because I think that having that positive attitude and having a a strong community of support that
You're worrying about bears being weak, you think that's positive?
Come on, well, that's 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 a different matter, but how but supporting new players and and not having that toxic community, I again, I I draw the analogy between um Smash Brothers and Warcraft, and one of the main differences is the Smash Brothers community is so tight-knit, like everyone in the tri-state area knows each other, like we all like stayed at each other's houses, we all go out and we drink together and it's like, it's a ton of fun, like it's not just the game. So I think fostering that community is super important. Uh one thing that we do really well is the gym Discord, it's a great spot for new players to learn, it's just people don't know about it, so um yeah, it's like when you meet players on ladder, just don't don't be an asshole, I think that's really important, is is just being nice to new players.
True. Um Zalek C. asked, Todd, would you like to see more new items in the game? Personally, no, uh I would definitely like, by the way, I loved that patch that they did on the items where like lightning shield became two charges, did less damage. They removed crystal ball from like the highest tier of items that you could find on big camps and stuff. But it definitely feels like there's still a lot of item luck, and now it's becoming more and more clear-cut, as everybody's getting better at the game, like if you like let's say, you know, there is always this situation, right, like I play human, if I find brilliance, I'm like, let's say, you know, there is always this situation, right, like I play human, if I find brilliance, I'm always like, oh, okay, well, that's completely useless, that's gonna be a sell. And sometimes it's even annoying to go all the way to the shop to actually have to sell it, it kinda breaks your rhythm if you wanna be creeping, if you wanna be engaging. Whereas if you find like unholy aura or like, you know, uh and endurance or whatever, it's like amazing, like it's early Christmas compared to some of the other items that you can find, so I I still think there could be more that balance that could be added to that, also those fucking rings, like are you serious, like? Like when sometimes you just find so many rings, like it keeps happening to me, it's like super annoying in my opinion, so I would love for them to keep on balancing that, even though that was one of my favorite things that they did. Uh in recent times, so to speak, was like changing all of the items, what about you guys?
Thing about potentially nerfing like the aura items that are red camps. Cuz it feels like when you get like Andurian Sora or you get like Mana Aura or uh DK Aura, it feels like it's such a big game changer compared to like opening, getting like out of cunning and Medallion or like a a a Helm of Valor. I I think it gives like a ten percent speed, like for example, Andurian Sora, let's say you make it like five percent instead. Would that be still be good? I think it would still be on the level of an out of cunning or a Medallion of Courage or whatever, so I feel like it would be less of an RNG like.
Yeah, but how how would you change it?
How do you change it?
Yeah.
Well, the aura I think gives you a ten percent uh speed, like say you like you get Andurian Sora, it gives you ten percent speed, you make it five percent instead. I think it'd be better, cuz it feels like as on that we get an item, it's it feels like the micro is just so smooth.
You know what I thought? I thought all of these items, they should give more gold. So that when you find something that you're not happy with, you just sell it and you're happy to sell it, because now when I find my ring and I sell it for, I don't know what it is, like sixty two golds, I'm like or even like you, you find brilliance aura, you sell it for almost nothing and you're like, oh my god, I could have gotten this amazing aura. Or I can find this one that I already have and selling, sell it for almost nothing, like I'm not gonna get much gold for it and I have to go make a trip to the shop, which like I said, a lot of the time, depending on the map, can be very annoying to go all the way to the shop. I mean, I got a glass cannon hero, you know, the arc mage, like I don't want it to be out there alone on its own, cuz I'm gonna hear the horse screaming otherwise and he's gonna be dead, so I definitely think that's the main thing about items, I would increase the gold that's they give when you sell them, in my opinion, cuz then they could, that could change a lot of games, you know, like games where like at the end you have almost nothing, you sell your items, you can still remake a little bit of an army. That could make the make the game a little bit more din- dynamic, that could also break it.
Yeah, I I like that, cuz right now it sells for, I think, fifty percent of the marketplace value, I think it, they could, they could up that to seventy five percent and just see what happens, I don't think that that would be a game breaking change and it would be interesting to see how that changes people's strategy, like if people will be more likely to sell those items or not. Yeah, I think that's a great, that would be a great change, so should be something they should consider.
Yeah, that's a good idea, maybe seventy five might be a bit too much, but like sixty five, seventy, maybe.
Yeah, sure.
Would be nice, yeah, uh also, uh sorry, all items, I I think we really need to nerf uh ward of uh vision wards. Yeah, what what's the name, I don't remember, but uh what of vision and
Century ward?
Century wards, yeah, century wards.
They already nerfed it, no?
Yeah, but we should nerf even more, I think one, only one charge, yeah, one charge. And also one of the wind is also, in my opinion, a bit too strong.
Oh, yeah, fucking head item.
Two items, needs.
I get my dispel on tier two, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the wind is really uh really annoying. I would rather like have the item being well balanced instead of like just getting an item, just selling it for more gold, I would love more items to be more well balanced and you keep them. Rather than just having more gold, I think that'd be better, I don't know, that'd be more interesting in my opinion, to be more exciting as well, than selling it.
Incinerator asked a great question, what do you think we can do as players who love the game to help the scene in light of all the hate for Blizzard slash Reforged?
I read it earlier already.
Sorry?
I said, I read the question, I read it earlier, I said, yeah, I said going to like ESL, like supporting like Warcraft events.
You think that's what?
Going there, what?
You you think that's what is like the most important?
I mean, I I don't know, like, let's say it's like a Warcraft boot and at DreamHack and then you go there, it's like a hundred people. I think you you show that like people love the game and there's like some sort of like support there.
Yeah.
And people still care, and like if you go there, it's like five people just chilling, and then you select the the Dota two boot is like a thousand people, you know what I mean, I I I think, I would think it's like the best way to support it, I think I think it's something you can do, I I I'll think it's like something that you can really do to change like to like, like change the world or anything, but I think it's 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 something that you can do. I'm not too sure exactly what what we could do to to make it, what do you guys think?
That's what Lado said earlier, right, be positive and stuff.
Yeah, be positive.
Yeah, I kinda agree with that, I feel like uh creating content, just streaming and stuff in general. Just getting out there, you know, not just playing the game and like trying to do a little more, like obviously with the hype around Reforged, we're seeing so many weekly tournaments, I think that's gonna help as well, cuz it gives people something to look forward to, especially at a time where we don't have neither stats or uh I guess MMR now people started talking about the fact that there is like some sort of secret MMR, that's actually a little bit nice, I think in my opinion, like obviously we hope there is gonna be, that's gonna be more refined in the future, but yeah, just having stuff to like look forward to, you know, those tournaments that you can watch, that you can play and stuff. In my opinion, it's important and creating content, like helping the newer players, I feel like there is not necessarily that many tutorials and stuff, so for example, myself, I plan on making some and I think it'd be pretty cool if you guys as well, like other than when you're streaming, started doing some of these too, cuz that helps out new players a ton, you know, like if you start out Warcraft three you don't really know where to look. So like, you're gonna look at some Twitch uh channels and stuff, but like unless everything's being explained to you, it's still like very, very hard to figure out exactly how you're supposed to go about playing in a certain matchup, so in my opinion, those are gonna be very important to.
I always, I anytime people ask questions, like beginner level questions in my chat, I always point them towards the gym Discord. I think the gym Discord is great, the way it's organized, I think the community that it has is is really good, like anytime you ask a question, you'll get an answer from a high level player like within an hour. And and it will be a really good answer for the most part.
How how can people find this Discord?
Uh, let me see, actually.
So cuz like advertising it more than and making it more accessible is gonna be very important, you know, like
Yeah.
It feels like more channels should have this Discord linked as like one of the sources. Like I wouldn't mind making a comment in my chat, for example, to send people there to to check out some of the stuff.
How do I even, how do I link?
I guess I actually have a link now for the gym disco, if you guys are beginners or like mid level, whatever, you wanna join the community. Uh it's a good, it's actually a community where people share replays, just talk strategies or you wanna find people to play with. So there's gonna be a link in your chat, Todd, right there, you guys are free to join. Uh everybody's welcome, everybody's super helpful there, great people, uh I see Sid a lot, by the way, shout out to him. Was always helping people over there, answer a question and try to talk strategies, so it's really nice, so like these high quality players that actually cares about the lower tier players and uh you can always find someone there to practice with. There's always these small tournaments as well for the lower tier player, so you don't have to worry about going to these tournaments and meeting someone who's going to beat you in five minutes. So I think uh it's a really good community for everybody regardless of your skill level and uh invite everybody to join it, seriously, I think it's really.
Actually, I found it, I searched, I searched on Google Warcraft GM Discord and it sent me to a Reddit thread where like the fourth comment or whatever is the link. So unless that link expired, it's actually.
I mean, I had a link right now, it was like up today, I just, they're really just looking at link on the gym discord, so I'll post it again.
I don't know if this is just gonna be on YouTube, like it might be elsewhere also, like if some people just listens to this, like say, for example, on Spotify. They might not have the link or not know where to find it, so if you guys search Warcraft GM Discord in Google, you can find a Reddit thread in which there is the link at the bottom, I just did that and it sent me to it.
That's good.
Um. You guys see any more questions? What's so funny?
Someone asked, someone asked if the couch is where the magic happens, the answer is yes, of course.
So it's a, are are you really, are you really Canadian? Hell yeah, look at this. That ain't, that ain't the US. Yeah, I'll think, I'll think there's any more uh, any more questions in the chat.
Tiski asked, Todd, many times you said undead versus human cannot be balanced because it would affect other matchups. Perhaps then other map pool, like more easy, like more maps with easier fast expand, like Lado says, TS easier map is also good for Night Elf. Human also doesn't play fast expand versus Orc quite often since. Standard seems to be better after changes to MK and Millishir et cetera. Yeah, actually, we haven't talked about the maps that much, right? Like uh for a long time, the map pool was like very stale, you know, you had like maps like Turtle Rock that have been like part of the map pool for like, I don't know, fourteen years or something absurd.
Yeah.
And then now finally Turtle Rock was rotated out and then we got some new staples, we got like Concealed Hill, Northern Isle. Uh Last Refuge has become like one of the most, I think, played across like multiple matchups and it's always in there in like a lot of the series. Might be the most played map, actually, I don't know, but.
Yeah, Amazonia is up there too.
Yeah, Amazonia as well, yeah, do you guys think it would be good to like keep on introducing newer maps and stuff and like remove the ones that are maybe like less popular or like more imbalanced? To try and.
I would love to see new maps again, I think, I think the tunnels and concealables are really, I I've seen really great maps, I absolutely love them. I think Swamp Temple was a bit of a of a fail, uh uh as far as competitive goes. I think the map is not bad, I just think that concealables and the trials were better, so I think uh, yeah, I think this map really found their way into the the competitive scene pretty easily, I think people didn't have time, like much hard uh hard time adapting to it. And I think it's really nice, I think Turtle Rocks are even balanced, I think it's good that they took it out, so um maybe for like the future, I think I would like to see maybe Twisted Meadows being removed, cuz everybody seems to veto it. Like you and players always veto it, it feels like under players don't like playing on it as well. So uh I I think Twisted Meadows could be a map that could be potentially considered to be removed and could be replaced by something else. Maybe even bring back another map, maybe like Secret Val or something, even though I know.
Hell no.
No, no, you don't like it, man, I like it.
We got one fountain map already in the pool, that's pushing off.
I I can say like, I'm pretty biased, but I actually like Secret Valley, like I said, I would love to see new maps, I think uh I think those maps really found their way to tournaments pretty easily and uh like 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 people don't even veto them, so I think it's a good sign, like those tunnels is early played. Every tournament, the best of five, Conceal's always there too, so I think it shows that uh we can, we we definitely put mind away when it comes to having new maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the the thing is, the the community as a whole will pretty quickly either accept or reject the map too, so I, if Blizzard does have a way of rotating those maps in those maps will either make it into the map pool pretty quickly or they can take it out just as easily, so seeing new maps is a good way to to mix up the game and keep the game fresh and I would love to see new maps in the future.
Yeah, they did add the Dalaran, right, to the later map pool on Reforged.
Yeah, Delarian, Delarian is new and then there's that circle one that's really stupid.
Doran's not new, it was used to go on Nettie's like two, three years ago and nobody liked the map. Yeah, yeah, it's the point Nettie's at Dalaran and they actually changed the map a little bit, cuz there was a lot of uh balance, so personally, I I don't like the map. I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be competitive unless Blizzard really wants to put it in. But uh in my opinion, Dalaran's gonna be like one of my first videos. I really tried to bring back Nomad Nomad Isles, which was played on Double Torino like if, like four years ago at some point. But I don't think, yeah, I don't think people really like.
Yeah, Nettie's had some pretty bad maps, like the Tyrus Fall Glade and then the other one with the same tile set, like these were like terrible in my opinion.
Yeah, definitely.
Um Foby for the win asked, Todd, what does the pro players? I guess he means what do they do that separates them from other players in terms of gameplay, is it micro, macro or something different? I think it's like both of these, like it's everything, you know, their their strategy, like they know exactly what to do, when to do it.
Yeah.
And they can adapt very well, their timings are very good. Like sometimes you can have a very good strategy, but if you don't understand when you're supposed to attack, when you're supposed to defend, it's gonna be very hard to do well, so all of these.
I think, I would say decision making is probably the number one, I don't think, I don't think micro, I mean, I I mean, micro is definitely good. But I think knowing what to focus on fights, how to engage a fight, how to position yourself, and when to attack, when to push, your timings. I think it all goes to decision making, I think ultimately if your micro is okay, but you you really always do the right decision. You're gonna be an amazing Warcraft player, I don't think it's necessarily uh microing, even though of course we have like exceptions, but.
Yeah. Nurtron asked, what do you think if they make items like this, when you pick the item, you can choose any from that level of item? That removes the RNG completely.
What you say?
That would be too much.
So like, for example, if you find ring, you can transform it into claws or something, you can pick any item, or same for the auras.
That that would be so broken, that's bad.
Blendmaster would be crazy.
It becomes, it just feels like it becomes a different game, right, like you're racing for these items a little bit more, you know, it's kinda like you know, like Quake, you have these timers for like the armor and everything, it's kinda like that, like you need to know at what point you can go somewhere and get the item so that the opponent doesn't get it and then you add the perfect aura to your composition and stuff. It's almost like a quest game, you know, like you're trying to collect the perfect aura for you.
Yeah, I think RNG also just makes the game really much more fun, I think it's really cool when you don't know what to expect and you get like a mana pot at the right time.
Yeah, that's because you don't get rings every single game.
Yeah. I don't know, I think, I don't know, I think it would take away a bit of uh the fun aspect of Warcraft three.
Yeah.
Somebody said making rings stackable so that they can be more value in one slot, Todd. My my mouth tanking has like fifteen armor.
It was pretty tanky yesterday.
Yeah. Actually, I remember um once upon a time, the game was like super different, like you used to be able to TP instantly. And also, Taylorman was the one that suggested to Blizzard that when you click on the opponent's hero, you should be able to see their items. And I remember when he suggested that and also like the TP now taking a while to load, you know, and your your hero being invulnerable while tipping, I was like, this is totally stupid, like this is never gonna be good. And then now I think back on the way things used to be with the instant TP and with not being able to see your opponent's items and I'm like, that was terrible, I can't believe.
Yeah.
I used to think, so it goes to show, you know, like sometimes there is ideas like this to be had, which probably could improve the game quite a bit and I guess we can give them a chance, but yeah, I hope there is gonna be maybe some stuff like that to try and improve like the item stuff personally. Like even just my idea of making items give more gold, like you would be a lot less sad if you could sell like, you know, some of your items knowing that you're actually gonna get some decent gold for it, but now it's like if you get a bad item, well, you're kinda, you know, stuck with it, you sell it, but then you get almost nothing for it.
There's a guy in the chat, he said, uh this is directed towards you, Todd, but I've, I can chime in on it. Says, do you think that Beastmaster, Tinker, Firelord need a buff since they're not very popular? I think the heroes as a whole are pretty well balanced and even the Beastmaster, Tinker and Firelord do see some kind of niche play in very specific scenarios, which isn't a bad thing, because there's always going to be a a meta or there's always going to be a hero that that feels the strongest, so you have to be so careful with those heroes that are already pretty good in a particular situation. If you buff them, they're just gonna skyrocket that situation and it's gonna be, it's gonna make it, it it so yeah, you have to be so careful with those balances with things that are, that already do feel balanced.
You know what they are, they are situational.
Yeah, that's the word, yeah.
I think Remo actually tweeted about this at some point, something like that, asking about some of the heroes, oh no, about about units. He tweeted about, I just found it. Um, I'll show it on the stream.
I saw Remo with some pretty good suggestion on Twitter a few times, actually.
He said, I wonder if necromancers and witch doctors would be buds in real life, bonding over how useless they both are. And I said, and I said, they are situational, not if units in the game needs to be a hundred percent viable in every situation, in my opinion. I think the reason he said that is because, like he cast a lot of solo tournaments, you know, I think like these units uh in particular witch doctors in team games, they can be pretty good, necromancers, like I've recommended Dreadlord into necromancers to side and he's been crushing it against a lot of people, so like I said, they're situational, if you open uh
Yeah, I agree.
If you open Dreadlord, that can be very good to transition into, but in most games, you're not gonna see like out of the blue necromancers joining the fight and being like outright amazing, you know, like it's more about the benches in most matchup that you're gonna be seeing.
By the way, ducks are also used sometimes, like I saw Fly play like a every big macro game against Happy once and it was like three bases, against two bases, he made ducks and he literally warded the entire map to to prevent shades and save everything.
Yeah.
So like, of of course, like, like you say, it's not usually, I see every time, but I think in those long kind of games, you can really make one or two. Most likely one, just like ward like the map. And about necromancer, I think necromancers have more potential than ducks to be used. I I just, I just don't know where exactly when to use them or how they're gonna be played, but I I do believe that at some point they might find their way in the meta.
Side notes.
I I I just think, I just think, I I don't know, I don't know where really, but yeah, I think they have some use.
Speaking about necromancers, by the way, to change them back to the old version, they're not like, they don't have cripple as the first kill anymore.
Yeah.
Just saying, cuz it wasn't, it wasn't announced, we just noticed, but uh it's official.
Oh, they're gonna change them back?
No, they're not, they did, yeah, so Knighten's strategy, for example which he was really fond of versus Orc is not gonna be possible anymore, because it was reliant on cripple.
Okay.
But, yeah, just saying.
Um Thousand has, Todd and the rest, should gold cost for items be increased to level up item luck? Yeah, that's kinda what I talked about that, personally, I think that'd be great to have that. Uh Rachi asks, do you guys think the level of skill required to be poor Warcraft three now is higher than ever? For example, Todd, you were a pro, love your perspective on this. This is a question that comes back very often, I feel like unless we're talking about like athletes of a certain sports, where like the limits have been pushed very, very far. Almost certainly, the good players of today would absolutely crush the good players of like, you know. Even maybe like five years ago, but ten years ago, definitely, like if you follow Starcrafts and you watch the first few Starcraft GSL and stuff, it's almost laughable how much better the players are today. And I feel like for Warcraft, it's probably also the same, like I think if I played myself from like old days. Like, I mean, obviously, there will be patch and stuff to take in consideration, obviously, that guy knew exactly what he was doing on the patch. I still think like micro wise, I'd be better, like decision making, like almost everything, so I think the players of today are obviously, but it's it's the same in uh mathematics and everything, right? Like mathematics nowadays is like so much more. Like mathematics nowadays is like so much more advanced that if you started learning mathematics, there's so many stuff that you can do, like learning equations, like ways to learn quicker, ways to remember stuff better, that's people like now will always be better than they used to be. What do you guys think about this one?
I don't know, I failed my maths, so I have no idea.
No, but let's
It works. Um, I don't mean like it, like I wasn't playing back in the days, but I don't know, I think the game really like definitely like always evolves and I think uh yeah, players are probably better because, because nowadays like you have streamers to watch, you have like maybe like coaches, you have like more tools to to get better at the game. So I think that's a lot easier for players to, to get better at the game. That's why like in 2020, we're like better than like back then. Because I feel like it's all a little easier. Like nowadays, you just go to your favorite streamer, like one of the best player, you like sometimes just ask a question. Or you can do a donation and you'd be like, hey, like what should I do against this or that? And then they give you like a really good answer and then you can just watch replays. And like, of like your favorite players and stuff. And I, I don't know, I, I think it's just easier nowadays. That's why like makes players better than uh than before. Also, game just keeps evolving and there's patches and we, like nowadays that you, you, like you have servers like Nettie's where you have like the best Europeans, the best Chinese, the best Korean players against each other. You have like these super high level servers. So I think the skill level just evolves because these players just keep swinging all the time and it's just easier to, to improve.
Hey, Lado's horse is here.
Lado's horse.
Someone in chat asked to see
It's so big. Oh my god, it's so big.
Trying to come up on the thing.
Jesus.
I, yeah, I agree with what you guys are saying. People are constantly gonna be pushing the skill envelope and people are constantly gonna be getting better, so yeah, I mean, you, you can actually go back and watch the old YouTube VODs of those high level Warcraft competitions and they make a lot of mistakes that people don't make anymore. So um yeah, I mean, it's, it's constantly getting harder and harder to, to be at that pro level, I think.
Yeah, but to be fair, I think we, there's a lot of mistakes or a lot of tricks we do nowadays because we've seen it. But if, for example, you, you, I don't know, teleport in back in time and you, you play two things. I think people will adapt really quickly and copy what you do and also improve really quickly. You know, like uh changing the AI when you're getting focused while creeping, stuff like this.
Pulling the creeps.
Yeah, for example, you're pulling the creeps.
Someone asked, uh, Lado, so how do you feel about creep camp difficulty? Ogre lords, for example, are very easy to drop, huge item game swing items, also easy to do as orc at level one, which is a few axes and shit, etcetera. I think he's talking about like a, a, a concile ails, like you can literally like pull back like the big ogre and get the item really quick.
Yeah.
But what's like, I would, I would actually like to talk about on TM when you can pull the golem. I feel like this is so broken. I feel like this is so good for Orc. Like you, you
For anybody?
For Orc, because that start, you can literally start by getting a golem, get the XP and then you get like a Zobi mask or something. I think that's really, really too strong. I feel, I, I feel like stuff like that, like little tricks like this should be uh, should be nerfed a little bit, especially when it's too strong like that.
You think all of them or like, for example, Concealed Hill, the pool?
I think Concealed is, is better because eh, eh, like every racist can just like pull back the big ogre and just like the tavern and get it. Like on TM, like, 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 uh, maybe with undead, you can do it, but like it's not really like as good as doing it with Orc. With human, you can do it with uh, with like elf, like you can really do it. So I think, I think on TM it should be fixed. I think on Concealed ails or, or stuff like that, like I really think it should be uh saying like this, because every racist can do it. Like on TM, it's just like only orc can do it. So I think it's really creates a sort of a balance and makes you know what to play against Orc on TM.
Elf, elf can actually do it. You can like block them with the AOW and use to like build a moonwell. I've done it before. It's like, it, the thing is, it kind of messes up your base build and the other thing is, is on TM, you also have the option to like creep the merc camp with your AOW, which is usually the better pick anyway. So you can actually do it with elf on TM. It's one thing I'd like to see the, the pros, like I want to see like Foggy try to explore that, because you basically do the same thing. You build the AOW like where the orc would build the shop. You lure the ogre in and then you build a moonwell to trap him on one side and you trap him on the other side with your hero and the AOW keeps hitting him and you usually have an archer or a hero, but it is possible to do. It's just, it's easiest for Orc to do. Um, but I agree with you, those tricks, they feel kind of cheap, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it, it doesn't feel good, but how are you gonna change it? Are you gonna reduce the leash on the, you know, I use the word leash? Are you gonna reduce the leash on the, on the creep camp or I don't, yeah, I'm not sure.
I think it's good like to keep them because it makes like your opponent's scout a bit more and it feels like it's as obvious to know where your opponent is. Because you can actually go for a red camp really early on with that. So I feel like it makes the game a little bit more like uh bigger, like more complete and I feel like it makes you scout a bit more, be more aware like uh less predictable to like know where your opponent is. I think that's a good thing.
Wisto tattoo asked, would you guys actually he phrased that pretty poorly actually, but he said, would you guys like for old school Clan Wars team? Like for solo and one two V two as team to be back? I think that'd be pretty cool, actually, like back in the day WC3, I was like all the rage. He was like almost more hype. Probably not more hype than, than the solo tournaments, but it was the constants that we had going every week. So now it seems like almost every single tournament is like only solo, like two V two tournaments are like very, very rare, but in my opinion, two V two in Warcraft III is amazing and team leagues are amazing as well. But the question is, would there be enough players and would it be as interesting as way back then? I guess the only way to find out is to maybe try it. I mean, there is a couple, there is the W3 IL, right? But it's not got nearly as much hype as like the team leagues did back then, but uh that's something that I'm missing personally for sure, you know, having played during the the golden era, if you will, of Warcraft III and like WC3L being like one of the main entertainments that's, you know, I not only enjoy to play, but I follow as well.
Yeah, in very recent time, those Clan Wars were a ton of fun at, at every level, because there were leagues at every level of Warcraft II, um, or Warcraft III also, but um like the, you know, there was the WC3L and the NGL one were the main ones, but then there were, there were leagues for every level of play, which made the game really fun. It was a good way to like you know, test yourself and, and push the competition. It feels like in very recent time, those Clan Wars, while they do still exist, have kind of been replaced by those one-on-one cups. But if the question is, would I like to see more of those Clan War type styles? Yes, absolutely. I think it's good for the, anything that's good for the community and pushes out good content and pushes the competitive envelope, I think it's good for, good for the game.
I agree.
I agree.
Can you guys see anything? I'm trying to catch up. I was like all the way up in the chat. I'm going all the way down.
Yeah.
And I see some questions that you guys
There's actually a lot of them, yeah.
Yeah. If Blizzard in, ever introduced ranking games, what kind of system you guys would prefer? MMR or ladder system? Divisions?
I like to see divisions like in StarCraft, gold, silver, so, or like League of Legends, we have like Grandmaster and Diamond or whatever. I thi- I think, I think that'd be pretty cool. I think uh yeah, divisions pretty much.
I think StarCraft II does it perfectly. I like that they assign a number to your MMR too.
Yeah.
That you have that number. The, the other competitive community that I'm involved in is chess. And with chess, you have in like an ELO, you have an MMR basically and that rating is the thing that keeps pushing you to do better and better and you, you're always trying to get to the next hundred point of that, you know, of that rating. And so um having, having that number assigned to you, I think it, it helps. I think it's good. So I hope that that number gets pushed over to Warcraft III, like, like they have in StarCraft II.
But do you think uh the player base would be big enough to be able to do that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I do think so. Because it doesn't, because the player, the, the size, the size of the player base doesn't actually matter if you implement the MMR system. It's just the numbers will be adjusted based on the players, based on the size of the player base.
Yeah.
I think if we have like a global matchmaking right now, that would, that would be like more possible to have divisions. Of course, if you have like any server in Europe server for any, that'd be really tough, like to have games in Grandmaster, for example. I just made like GM would be like the, the toughest. I think if it's like a global server, like right now, like a matchmaking, I think division could really, really be uh implemented and, and, and I think it would be hard to find games.
Yeah. Uh, Holken asked, what about the fact that Warcraft III won't be attracting any new faces after Reforged launch and Reforged launch went so badly? Hardly any new players will be brought in. I don't think that's necessarily true, like, you know, like I said, when you play Warcraft III, you a lot of the time, either like it or you don't. So I don't think necessarily like this is gonna push some people away, like I feel like there is a lot of people saying, yeah, I'm really pissed off with Blizzard, blah, blah, blah. I don't wanna like to Warcraft III anymore and stuff. Trust me, like those people, they're gonna go out there, they're gonna play a couple of games that are out and I gotta be like okay, it's time to get back to Warcraft, because
Oh, yeah.
Let's be real here, like
Oh, yeah.
There is not many games out there that can like match the type of game that Warcraft III is. And you can, you can go out there and you can try and play like, I don't know, whatever it is that the kids play these days, like you know, like any game and like try to have fun with it. I think it's gonna be very hard to transition to another game, like even if you enjoy it a little bit. I highly doubt that it's gonna be the same level of enjoyment as you have when you play like a game like Warcraft III, such a unique game and a lot of people that have stuck with it through all this time, I feel like they might never really give it up unless, you know, real life took over, you know, like if there are too many stuff that they need to do, you know, with their family or whatever, with their job and that they don't have, they don't have the time for it. But I actually feel like it's very hard to get away from a game like Warcraft, even to this day, like you know, I play quite a bit of poker and I went to like last summer, I was in Vegas for the World Series. So many high rollers and when I say high rollers, I mean people that play for a living and are like multimillionaire, they used to play Warcraft III. And still to this day, they don't necessarily play it, but they've definitely kept it as like a very fond memory and they still remember, you know, like they used to play four V four or whatever and like they know some of the top players, they know a few of the names. And like, they keep it as a good, good memory, so I, I, I feel like saying like, you know, the Reforged launch was like a fail and like nobody like knew is gonna wanna stick around and stuff, that's definitely a, a very dark way to look at it. I think there's probably gonna be some people like this, but in general, I really think that if you like Warcraft III, you like this game and you're gonna stick around for it.
Yeah, it's a game that you always come back to anyway. Like sometimes you might be frustrated with like a patch or something, but like eventually you always go back to Warcraft and you always like stick around for a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, I think uh we can do some shoutouts and then I'm gonna let you guys, or like Sid in particular, go to bed. Because he's about, he's about to be uh, he's on kind of Dreadlord and cast sleep on himself, you know, like
He's a blind lad over on his couch. Like wow, that pillow looks comfy.
All right, Sid, go ahead first. Where can people find you? Twitch, Twitter, everything?
All right, so you can follow me on Twitch at uh Sid underscore. I'm streaming a couple of times uh every week, so yeah, make sure to turn in. I also am gonna do some giveaway of Reforged keys, thanks to Todd's contact, Mary. I have three keys to give out, so yeah, most likely I would do that tomorrow. So if you're interested in Reforged.
What time?
What time? Uh, eight PM, CT.
All three of them. How, how are you gonna pick the winners?
Marbles.
That's a, that's a good idea.
The marbles is the best one, man. It's so exciting, it's so exciting, man.
Yeah. I might do that, yeah.
How about the Twitter?
And you can, yeah, Twitter, you can follow me at FollowSid on Twitter.
All right.
I said for me, I'm uh pretty much a streamer as well. You can follow me at InsuperableW2 on Twitch. Also have a Twitter account, which I'm pretty much active over, uh at Root and Superbowl. And uh, that's pretty much it, man. What's fun with you guys, actually, thank, thank you guys as well for being there. It's been nice.
Thank you, yeah.
I'll put all the links under the description on the YouTube, but for all of this. Lado?
Uh, uh, you can find me at twitch.tv slash Lados Lounge. I usually play Night Elf and I, I've been switching between playing on my couch and at a desk, but I, the couch that you see me on right now, that is actually where I normally play, so
Do you play better from the couch?
No, I play better on my monitor for sure, but it's, it's still fun to play on the couch. But um, yeah, it's twitch.tv slash Lados Lounge. And I don't really use Twitter. I do have a Twitter. I should start using it, but my Twitter account is Lado Blanco, L A D O B L A N C O.
You definitely need to do that. Um, all right, well, I think I'm gonna do my own shoutouts and then talk a little bit about the Patreon uh on my own, so thank you guys for dropping by and then I would love to have you guys uh another time as well, like I'll keep in touch with y'all and uh I'll see you very soon. I'll put all of your info under the video in the description, so people can follow you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, boys.
Thanks so much.
Thank you all. See you guys.
See you.
All right, um give me a moment. Actually, I didn't plan for this. I will rejoin this. And I will open multiple ones of this, so you guys see me on each. Yeah, I should have had, I should have had a screen. One, two? One, two? Okay, so I'm all four people for the, for the end. Yeah, I just wanted to uh to say thank you for every, uh, all of these guys for joining me. And I would quickly wanted to talk about the Patreon that we have running as well. Okay, first of all, if you guys wanna follow me, you can do it on Twitter, I'm at Yoan Merlot. On Twitch, I'm Todd. My main social media is Twitter, but I also got like a Facebook and everything, but if you guys go to my Twitch, twitch.tv slash Todd, you'll see all of the informations about my social media. So yeah, the main goal here is to talk about the the Patreon, which I just opened to try and uh help out to pay for the people that helped me make thumbnails on my YouTube, which I will show you in a second, right there. Yeah. So this is what my YouTube has been looking like, a lot of like different like actual good titles, thumbnails, everything. I just made this video about my plans in 2020, so I plan on um doing some interviews, doing this talk show, organizing some tournaments. I will be doing a ton of stuff and making some tutorials as well on the sites to help uh people learn some build orders. So I think that's gonna be really cool to follow if you guys have any interest in that. Make sure to follow my YouTube. And also this is the Patreon right there. Where you guys can support me in uh doing all of these things. You've got different tier rewards right there. So tier one, tier two, like with a lot of different stuff. Not gonna go too much into detail for now, but if you guys wanna check that out, like we already got a few patrons and I think uh that's gonna be a great way for me to help uh pay the person that helps me, me make the thumbnails and that also helped me create this show. And ideally, I would love to be able to pay the show guests, which uh for example, in StarCraft, the Pylon Show is doing, so yeah. That's pretty much it, I think, yeah. Thank you guys for watching. Uh, make sure to follow all of the guys that were on the show. I will put the, all of the links on the YouTube, so wherever you guys are watching this, you can go on the YouTube video.